Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday evening, April 10th, 2018. I'm calling the order, calling the meeting to order. And the first thing I just wanted to do is make an announcement about an agenda item that some of you may be here for. The Board originally at 7:20 had a public hearing on the change of location for the Main Street Market and Deli. Our Town Council has had conversations with council representing the Main Street Market. And we are actually not going forward with the public hearing tonight. I apologize if anybody came for that, that decision. We were only informed about it about an hour and a half ago. We want to make sure that all of the proper procedures are being followed. So, we're not going to talk about it tonight. We're not going to take any public comments. What we will be doing is sending out a new legal notice that's going to be published in the Hingham Journal about when a new hearing will be held. Also, anybody who isn't a butter to the property will be sent a notice with the new date and time. Again, I know there's a lot of public interest, so Tom, maybe as well, we could put that on the, you know, on the homepage of the website and send that out. Again, our apologies if anybody came specifically for that agenda item. We did try to get the word out when we were made aware, just about an hour and a half ago, that that wouldn't go forward tonight. With that, we will take up the approval of minutes for April 3rd.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 3rd, 2018.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I should also mention, and I apologize, Mr. Healy will be joining the meeting between 7:45 and 8 o'clock this evening. Public comment on any items not on the agenda? The next order of business is the renewal of the cable television license of Verizon New England, Inc. And who's here? Can everybody come on up? Sure. Welcome.
I have two, I'm Dave Jones. I'm the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee. This is Learn Council, Bill Solomon. We also have representatives from Verizon here. I have two copies of the license signed by Verizon. So, I guess you hold on to those.
Sure.
You'll sign off on that. I also sent you a memorandum of kind of the highlights. Do you want me to just go through the, you know, the top five?
That would be helpful.
I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just, you know, the top five. Okay. There was four things of the license renewal that I think that, you know, really should, we should hit on, and I'll just briefly go through them. The biggest deal, which we've heard a lot from you guys especially, was HD. So, we have negotiated with Verizon to have the capability of an HD channel in addition to the other three channels we already have. So, you're going to have to look a lot better in HD than...
Bill, will that be, will that channel be dedicated to either government, education, and public access?
We're still planning that with Harbor Media. We're thinking maybe like a best of, whatever, but we definitely, you guys will be on there. We haven't got the final plan on, but at least got over the hurdle of getting it available.
Right. And the license provides the option for the town to decide if it's an existing channel or a new channel, and then a right to change that at one additional time. So, does have flexibility.
Thank you.
Next up, previously the license was for 10 years. We're now going to five years. This was kind of where the industry's going to because the telecommunications industry's really kind of in a lot of flux, so they're trying to, you know, manage their business. But in our, getting our HD channel, we had a negotiation, says, "Okay, HD," but then we have five years, so we kind of came to an agreement. So, it's a five-year term on the license. On our operating and support, we got a, an increase. Previously was 4.2% of Verizon's gross annual revenues. We're now getting, in this particular license, we're getting 4.85. So, it went up because of the HD.
And do we have a sense of their, I mean, I would imagine that their revenues have changed quite a bit since the last contract. Are they, are they up? Are they down?
Oh, yes. Yeah, you know, probably up, you know, close to 40% since the last license, or even a little above that.
That went up. And then, PEG Access Capital Funding. We have, the way that payment will work, we'll have five annual payments of $19,000. And then, we'll also have a quarterly payment of 0.5% of the gross annual revenue. The glory details are in the license, obviously, but that's kind of like where the numbers are. And what else can I tell you? I can also tell you that the capital necessary over the next five years to upgrade the high definition on the town access corporate side and to replace equipment as it wears out, or becomes obsolete, so that's where that money is going. So, those kind of like the five top things. What we recommend, we, that you sign it and approve it. And we have two copies. And that's about all I've got to say. I don't know, do you have any questions on it?
So, just in terms of the capital, would those dollars be used to replace existing? Or do you think there might be the capacity, for example, to wire more meeting rooms here in Town Hall? For example, I know the room right next to the Selectmen's normal meeting room is not wired, so when we want to televise in that room, it's more complicated for Harbor Media.
Yeah, we can, we can use some of those. You're asking, can we use some? Yes, that's the answer there is yes.
There should be no. The capital might be about $40,000 a year total. And in addition, there's nothing that prevents the use of some operating, depending on the relationship and the contract with the Access Corporation, to use some operating directly or through the Access Corporation for the capital. So, Hingham's size and subscriber base and the license will be enough to do those needs going forward.
And who makes that determination? Does the Cable TV Advisory Committee have a capital plan? Like, who decides how that money's deployed?
We have a plan with, well, we're now calling it Harbor Media. They have a plan. We work together on it, how we want to allocate the money and then go forward, so.
And then, the other question I had, I guess, with respect to capital, and this may be a dumb one, but, you know, we've had, over the last two or three, four weeks, we've talked about our road construction plan and road openings. Is there, is, does Verizon need any access to any sort of underground capabilities that should be paired with the, with the road openings for capital improvements? Are they laying any underground cable at this point?
Except for matter, we could have them address it, but usually in the cable license, what we try to do is have the general language with respect to the right-of-way here in a Verizon license, because their view is that their cable system is their telephone and internet system. The last license and this license, it works by requiring Verizon to comply with the town's bylaws and regulations. So, in that sense, that they're required to do that, and you're allowed to amend your bylaws and regulations. But as to what their future is in terms of laying fiber and cable, I'm not sure these gentlemen can answer, but you feel free to ask Attorney Paul, I mean, Paul Train.
Paul Train.
And Bruce Bozager.
Welcome.
My name is Paul Train. I'm from Kirby Harrington Pinkerton, representing Verizon New England. First of all, thank you for having us. And I want to thank the chairman and councilman, Councilor Solomon, for their cooperation and advocacy for the town over the past nine months. And the other members are here as well, and it was a pleasant experience dealing with the folks in Hingham. So, thank you. In terms of the question of getting into roadways that are being opened up, Verizon would abide by all local rules and all time, place, and manner permits that the town would require. So, it may be an instance where if you're digging up a main thoroughfare, Verizon would apply for the proper permits as that's going on and put in facilities. So, it'd be consistent with what they've done in the past. By and large, the facilities have been built out in your town.
Okay.
So, virtually, everybody that wants cable service, or telephone service, or internet service can get it in Hingham. So, there isn't that much to build, but as events happen like this, where there may be a chance to go underground, Verizon may avail themselves of that opportunity.
Okay. And they're on the list. They're notified of the road building. They're part of that.
Yes. They're one of the utilities.
And I think the five-year road building plan, I think Tom Malinari just distributed an update, I think, the day before yesterday.
Yep.
It's out there. It's available on the town website as well.
Okay.
Any?
No, I guess I just, I share your concerns, Mary, about continuing to, continuing to wire or provide cable capability for Town Hall on the government side. You know, I think that it's, it, the seamlessness with which folks can hold their meetings in the same rooms and then also be able to provide the public that sort of transparency and access to meetings. You know, it's tough to come out on a Tuesday night, but you can stay informed by watching local access.
And that's, I think that the committee's view was that more folks that could watch it in HD, they would at least maybe channel surf and find it. So, we've agreed to that, and hopefully Comcast will do the same in 2019. And the agreement also calls for free drops to public buildings. So, as you expand the number of free drops, if you want to expand within this building or some other building, all we need is a written request for it, and we'll expand the free drop program to provide service to that location. And I'd be remiss to, Bruce Bozager from our firm, who's a 30-year Hingham resident who negotiated the vast majority of this agreement. I came in late to it, but I want to acknowledge Bruce, because first of all, he's local, and second of all, he did most of the work. So, I want to say thank you to Bruce.
Very much. Appreciate it. Well, so my only other question is, when we go to HD, we're going to need to put like a hair and makeup line on him. And that works out.
John Rice told us all that when we go to HD, more funding will be needed, and so, he didn't describe all the details. The lighting, the whole thing.
I will say that with the HD, you know, we, you know, our board, a lot of other committees, anytime there's a presentation where there's a slide, especially if they're numbers, even if you make the numbers really big, you know, I don't know if it's just my eyesight as I'm getting older, but it's really hard to see. And particularly, we just finished budget season, so I think people's, people will engage more if they feel like they can read what's there, and the presentation quality is better. So, it's really helpful.
Yes. You know, I recently came to that understanding, even though I work in the field, that with presentations and budgets on a board, that in the modern day, you know, in the old days, you couldn't see it, you didn't expect to. But now, you need to and want to. And so, that's, the real importance of HD and PEG Access is that people can read things that are posted up there and not necessarily have to be through the TV system. So, that's a great point.
And it is, it is surprising that we get a lot of feedback that people watch our meetings. And sometimes it comes from people you wouldn't expect watch, or at unexpected times, but I think Harbor Media, Harbor Media does a great job, and so we, you know, we appreciate the partnership.
And did you get some sense that you feel like this is consistent with sort of Verizon's relationship with other communities?
You handled, yeah. Yes, but this license took a while to negotiate. We did it in sort of an elite community, Attorney Bozager, who is just a real pleasure to work with and a great draftsman. And together, we had to negotiate some very important issues. The issue of the potential modification of the license. And I feel that the language we have here that looks at other possible competitors and references other cable licenses, cable franchises, or similar agreements for people who use the public way, not just, you know, someone who might get out there and get some grant allocation for, for something, and these folks want to compare themselves to those folks.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's a critical provision that we were able to compromise in different ways, that I think works well for the town, and frankly, in a five-year license is, protects Verizon certainly fully. Also, another critical issue was the issue of the bundling of services. And the last time, the town worked very hard to have language about bundling. In the bundling, you have to figure out, well, how much of the bundle is cable? Because that's what the percentage is applied to, not the internet and telephone. And the town felt strongly about language that was, that was objective on the question of bundling and not subjective. And we were able to reach, again, in compromise with Verizon through Mr. Bozager, Attorney Bozager, language that we think is reasonable and fair to both parties, but protects the town's interest in an objective manner. Those two issues were, I think, Hingham stands apart from many other communities where their view was that the issues weren't as significant as your committee deemed it to be. So, I think overall, it's a, it's a very protective license for the town. The one thing I would ask Verizon going forward is when, when there's the transition to HD, there's an opportunity for Verizon to change some of the channel locations. And I asked that they would reach out to the, to the town and discuss that before making changes, and as best the parties can, to see if they can reach some understanding on it. It may, it may not be possible. They maybe, they don't need to change it. But channel location still is an important issue for PEG Access, and I'm confident that they'll work with the town on those issues, on that issue going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Could you come up to the microphone, please? Hi, John. Welcome, John.
So, two things. One is, you know, in the PEG Access, both Comcast and Verizon, you know, we're in a part of the spectrum that's called the SD spectrum. So, it's amazing that people are coming up to you and saying, "I saw you," because not that many people actually watch during that spectrum. They really have to know where it is and go find it. Most people watch TV. They are in the HD spectrum, and they're sort of surfing in that area. So, that's going to change. That's going to be very important. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that it needs, in the contract, there's a fixed amount of time in which we need to decide whether we are going to do a best-of channel. You know, so there's government, education, and public. Are we going to do a best-of? And then, are we going to replay that best-of on the SD spectrum? Because that makes sense. And I think it also has to do with, where do we want to devote our resources? Because it's expensive to program an extra channel. So, I think this discussion, there's a, there's a trigger on this, which we need to let them know sooner than later when we start doing that. So, I just want to let you all know that that's a discussion we need to have.
And, I'm sorry, would that initially take place between the Cable TV Committee and working with Harbor Media? Is that how that would sort of?
I think so, yes. I've asked the Harbor Media people to come up with their own opinion of it, and I told their executive director, who told them to bring it up at their board meeting. But eventually, I think we need to have a discussion on the Cable Advisory Committee and then come to you guys and say, "What do you think?"
Okay.
It's actually, that particular topic is on our agenda for next month's meeting.
Oh, great. Okay. And I know Harbor Media's board is meeting tonight, otherwise I'm sure there would have been some folks in the audience from Harbor Media.
Okay.
And I would just say that if, if there is somewhat time sensitive, if you can, you know, the sooner that you can let Mr. Mayo know when you might be looking to get on an agenda, that way we can get you on the agenda and make sure that that discussion has, happens on a timely basis for everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's other information that they have to call, like, you know, budgetary-wise, how does this affect their budget and resources?
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
I had a question, just for me.
Sure.
So, Verizon was offering us one HD channel. As you remember during our negotiations with Comcast, they were unwilling to do that.
Yep.
Is Verizon doing this with other communities across the state?
We have other agents, yeah.
Yeah, they, they are now, they're now. Initially, they were looking at, they had a few seven-year licenses, and then they decided that they couldn't do seven years. And they offered as an incentive to communities, the HD channel. You know, offer was appreciated. My view is there's sort of separate issues. And they, they are now, I think most communities are being offered that. To their credit, and I wanted to say, I know there's a lot of thank yous here, but a thank you also to Paul Train. And Paul, you must be an attorney. I always, he's so good at finance that I say, "He can't be an attorney, can he?" But he is, because he's with a law firm. Right. That's right. And he used to be in his own firm. Now, he's with a law firm. It's like, he must be an attorney. So, he is. So, Attorney Train was instrumental also, coming in on the financial side and getting this done. And I just, one quick vignette. One of the issues, Attorney Train was able to, I think, together with Attorney Bozager, get the deal approved, because the five, the five-year term also meant that the capital dollars needed to be increased. And in an understanding and appreciation of that, at that point, Verizon was still figuring out, what do they do with HD?
Yeah.
And there's a possibility of having the town having to pay from the funds you get for the HD channel. And in appreciation of their getting the deal done in a way that worked, the committee said yes to that. They then changed their, their position and decided they weren't going to be charging other communities, at least as of now. And to their great credit, they could have just continued with Hingham and said, "Well, you know, you've agreed to pay X thousand dollars, move ahead," but they didn't. And that, I think, really represents the really great, good-faith negotiation of Attorney Bozager and Attorney Train, in that they came back and they said, "Hey, we're not taking this approach. You don't have to pay for it." And that represented the full negotiation. But for these two individuals, it wouldn't be done. Very final comment, I always say to people, you know, the Cable Act is a wonderful law. It incentivizes both sides to figure out what really matters to them, what's important. And then to discuss that, ascertain that, the term is, and then to discuss that, sit down at a table here in the community. You know, in the modern world, if you called up Facebook, interesting day, I guess, Facebook or Google or, you know, Apple, and said, "Hey, come to Hingham, we'd like to talk to you for, you know, maybe once or twice a month for a few months," you know, you wouldn't get a call back.
You'd still be on the automated menu.
You would be. That's right. So, the law is actually a good, a great law for incentivizing that. And, but laws don't implement themselves, and it's because of these individuals representing in a very thoughtful way their company, but also in a way to figure out, how do you get to yes, that allow this to be done? So, my thanks to both of them.
Great. Thank you.
I just had one final comment, that as, as we have this high-def Verizon station, our droves of fans, and Comcast should know that Verizon is offering us in HD, and perhaps they should reach out to their Comcast providers and ask for the same.
Absolutely. That did enter our minds.
Is there, is there anybody?
It's the camel's nose under the tent. This is going that direction, and Comcast needs to catch up.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who had a question or wished to make a comment on this agenda item? If not, I'd make a motion to sign the cable television renewal license granted to Verizon New England, Inc.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
And thank you to my committee.
And I can sign it here, too, since I.
Yeah, he has to sign, too. He has to sign.
These two? Yeah, I'll do it now, so you can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on the request of Paragon Funding Group LLC Doing Businesses Wahlburgers for a Change in Beneficial Interest.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Welcome. Could you introduce yourself to the board and some members of the public?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Aida of McDermott, Quiltean Miller. With me is Patrick Renner. Mr. Renner is the Chief Financial Officer of Wahlburgers.
We've done this before, haven't we?
We have.
Well, then, we do this every year?
Yeah, a couple of years.
Okay. Okay. Could you maybe just explain?
Yeah, we're here on an application for a change in beneficial interest. It does not affect the actual licensee, which is Paragon Funding Group III LLC. That licensee is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Wahlburgers Holding Company LLC. So, the change in the beneficial interest is actually happening at that parent level. And essentially, it is some transfers of stock and new investors up at that, again, that parent level. The existing corporate structure chart, as well as a proposed corporate structure chart, has been submitted, along with all the applicable documents and disclosures. So, what's important to note, I think, for the public, is that there's no changes in the day-to-day operations or the management or control of the license, and you're not going to see any, any change on that, on that basis.
Karen, did you have any questions on this?
Yes, so that, I think that goes a long way in answering my question. So, it's just, you know, sort of way up above the operation of the restaurant. Anytime there's a change in that ownership structure, that needs to be reflected in your license.
That's correct. Even an indirect beneficial interest change, where there's no control over the actual operations or the, you know, the management, does require disclosures and us to come in front of the board, and then also final approval at the ABCC as well.
And so, does the ABCC do any diligence on the folks that then are in this ownership change?
They do. They review all the paperwork.
All the disclosures.
And it's assigned to an investigator, and they should go through all the proper avenues, just like any other transfer in ownership, so.
Okay.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from anyone in the audience on this agenda item? Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move that we approve the request of Paragon Funding Group III LLC DBA Wahlburgers for a Change in Beneficial Interest, subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the transfer of a retail wine and malt beverages license to Ralph's Hingham Wine Merchant LLC. Good evening.
Hello.
Could you please introduce yourselves for the benefit of the audience?
Yes, I am Ralph Hersam from Ralph's Hingham Wine Merchant LLC.
And I'm Maura Sullivan, Hingham Wine Merchant.
And so, could you just briefly describe what brings you in front of the board tonight?
Well, I'm transferring the license from Hingham Wine Merchant to Ralph's, Ralph Hersam.
And Ralph, you're going to be opening in the same location?
Correct, yes.
Yep, so.
74 North Street.
Yep. Okay. Nice to see you back up in Rock. And I also have to say, we don't, we don't get a lot of correspondence from people, but I think I got three letters today in support, and people spoke just very highly of your business and how glad they were to see that.
Well, thank you, my wife and I are very happy to be back in Hingham.
Yeah. Well, we're glad, we're glad to have you. Tom, in terms of all of the procedural matters, this is all in order?
It is.
Karen, any questions?
Well, this may be oversharing, but I've been a customer of both establishments.
I only remember you once or twice.
It was the rosé glass that put me over the top. You know, I think that you both have run outstanding operations in, in both of your locations, both in terms of customer service and selection in Hingham, true to your craft, but also, you know, from, from my vantage point, very responsible ownership. And I think particularly moving to the square as a, as you well know, you know, being an anchor store on that strip in the square is super important, to be part of that downtown community and to continue to, you know, sort of bring that economic vibrancy to that, to that location. So, you know, I'm sorry to see you go, but I'm.
They just need Christmas lights at that engine square.
Okay. So, you know, in my mind, you know, if you have to go, then I can't think of anybody better to move into that location, so.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to make a comment or a question on this, on this item? Okay. If not, I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the retail package store wine and malt beverages license from Hingham Wine Merchant, 74 North Street, Maura A. Sullivan, manager, to Ralph's Hingham Wine Merchant LLC, Ralph Hersam, manager, subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
And I just have one more question. I know I should know the answer. The wine and malt beverage, then, it's beer and wine at that location now, and it'll continue to be beer and wine at that location. Okay. Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Maura, thank you so much. Ralph, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, the next item that the board is going to take up is a discussion of the town warrant planning articles. We have our Director of Community Planning and the Chair of the Planning Board here. So, Mary and Jen, if you could join us at the table.
This is mine. This is mine. This is mine, this is mine. Thank you, though, because just, yep.
Welcome.
Hello.
So, Mary, we're not going to, like, have a test on all that, are we?
I was going to say, you need to show up.
That's like a little, that's a little, that's a little bit scary.
That's pretty overkill.
Okay. So, just before introducing our guests, when I was on the advisory committee, Paul Healy used to remind me that, that the Planning Board always submits warrant articles for consideration, and that in many other communities, the advisory committee and the selectmen don't weigh in on them in, in any way. But, you know, here in Hingham, we have the advisory committee that reviews every warrant article, and while the Board of Selectmen does not hold hearings and take a formal position on warrant articles, it's been a tradition that has worked very well in Hingham, that after the hearings are concluded, we've invited the Planning Board in to give the board an overview of the articles under consideration for town meeting. It's both helpful for us, we think it's also very helpful for the public. I think it's especially ti, it's especially timely this year, given that we actually did have a point of intersection with respect to the recreational marijuana warrant articles. So, I, I know you're going to cover it. Paul, Paul is going to be joining us momentarily, so if I might ask that the accessory dwelling review be the final article on, on your agenda, because I know that's something that he has a particular interest in.
Absolutely.
So, and with us, we have our Director of Community Planning, Mary Savage Dunham, and the Chair of the Planning Board, Jen Gay Smith. So, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us tonight. So, as Mary said, in anticipation of our 2018 town meeting, the Planning Board has proposed a number of zoning articles. This year, we have more than usual. We have ten proposed zoning articles. Five of the zoning articles fall into the category of the routine annual zoning bylaw cleanup. We're lucky to have Mary Savage Dunham, our Director of Community Planning, who keeps track of items over the course of the year in our zoning bylaw that need improvement, and then she proposes for us how we should address them. So, five of them fit in that quite routine category of cleanup issues that aren't real substantive changes to the bylaw. And then there are four that are related to marijuana establishments. There's a marijuana establishment ban, and then, excuse me, I'm battling a cold. Then think of the next two articles, like Domino's. If the ban fails, there's a zoning article that intensely regulates marijuana establishments in town, and then if that were to fail at town meeting, there's a less intensive marijuana establishment regulation zoning article that really only addresses a few issues. The final marijuana zoning article, the fourth, relates to medical marijuana dispensaries. This is a use that's currently allowed in town, as we were required to allow them by the state a few years ago, and we're only proposing some cleanup to that zoning bylaw. It doesn't contain substantive changes, but it catches the bylaw up with the more current statute and regulations. And then finally, we have put forward this year a zoning bylaw article that would allow accessory dwelling units, which are commonly known, it's a, it's a funny term, it's, they're commonly thought of as in-law apartments. So, Mary will start us off by talking about the first five, the ones that I refer to as the, the routine annual zoning bylaw cleanup articles.
Super, thank you. We'll start out nice and easy, and I'm going to follow the same order in the backup material that I've provided to the Board of Selectmen. It's also on the Planning Board webpage. All of the information that we're talking about tonight can be found on our webpage, including some summary reports, so you don't have to take notes. The first article that we have is number twenty-one, and it's definitions. And you may recall that last year, we modified our lot shape bylaw. We are not going to relitigate.
Thank you.
The circle, the square. As part of that conversation, that bylaw change had a definition for lot width, and over the course of the year, we felt that as a convenience for our customers, we would simply add that definition from the lot shape section of the bylaw into our formal definitions section. So, the intent of zoning Article twenty-one definitions is to simply add the definition of lot width as adopted by the 2017 town meeting into the definitions section. And that definition is lot width, the horizontal distance between side hotlines measured parallel to the lot frontage. This is simply a copy from one section and a paste, so it's not even new language, it's just duplication.
Just thinking, maybe as we go through these, we'll just pause.
Any questions from the audience on this one?
Okay. The next one is flexible residential development. The purpose of our flexible residential development bylaw encourages cluster development, and so this modification is really a cleanup within that section, and it's simply to clarify that the minimum setback distance between structures on the same lot and a flexible residential development is referring to the principal structures, i.e. residential buildings, and not accessory structures like swimming pools, sheds, et cetera. And, so we are proposing to say, to amend Section 4D9B, to say minimum distance between detached principal structures on the same lot, thirty feet. And this really comes out of a practical experience where we have a number of these projects in town, and as they're developing, and people are putting in sheds, and houses, and swimming pools, the question is, how far apart do they need to be spaced? And it seems counterintuitive to have a cluster development regulation, and then require a pool to be thirty feet from a shed, to be thirty feet from a pool house from the principal structure. That minimum setback distance is really intended, if you could visualize, like, town homes or houses, a thirty-foot separation distance. And so, that is zoning Article twenty-two, flexible residential development.
Karen, just trying to visualize it, so. The, the basic idea of the, of the flexible residential development, I thought, was to say, you know, we're trying to leave as much open space as we possibly can in these larger lot areas, so if we can have folks kind of gather their development, and we have more open space. So then, you're saying, okay, that speaks to the principal dwellings on those lots, and then what happens when I want to put in a pool? So, how, take me through that again, how?
We're not prescriptive as to where the pool is located on the site, as long as it's not in one of the yards.
Setbacks.
Wetlands. There's other things that might constrain development locations. I neglected to state that the bylaw currently says minimum distance between detached structures on the same lot.
Oh, oh, oh.
And we're really just adding in the word principal.
Okay.
So, in, in a way, we're just clarifying, so that a staff enforces a regulation.
Okay.
The idea was to avoid it being misinterpreted as though all of those, if you spread out all of those structures, thirty feet from one another, that would be counter to the idea that we're clustering it all together.
That's why, that's what I was missing.
Right.
I apologize.
No, 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 my, my, it's a, I know you deal with this all the time, and if Paul were here, he'd be picking this up like, you know, nobody's business. It takes me a little longer to, to work through it.
Questions from the audience on Article twenty-two?
Okay. Article twenty-three is floodplain protection overlay district, and this is really just another cleanup provision. Our floodplain map is in the bylaw presently, and you may recall that we have changed it recently to put in our updated letter of map revision mapping that came out of the work that the selectmen began as a result of the flood insurance changes. And it came to our attention that within our GIS mapping, there was an error in how one of the floodplain districts was displayed on our computer map. In other words, our internal zoning bylaw map did not match the legal map that's on our website, the FEMA has. So, it's really a correction, however, that map is in the bylaw. So, I can't just go in and say, oh, that's a mistake, let me correct it. The way that we correct it is by going to town meeting and asking the town to amend it. So, the first revision is to really make a correction on our map, on how a small section is displayed, and there's no substantive impact to the residents, there has not been an impact to the residents. I think that probably our GIS administrator was one of the only people who was aware that this was a, an error. The second change is to correctly reference the firm panels and their revised two dates. And so, this suggestion actually came from the state, and it just refers to how we, we reference our panels. Our panels have letters of map revisions with certain dates on them, but the floodplain panels are still the same flood panels. So, we changed the language within that section in our bylaw, just talking about our letters of map revision. We now have three of them. And the third change is to change the way we reference those map panels, actually in the metadata on the bottom of the map. So, it's really naming conventions and correcting an error in how the information was displayed.
And the map needs to be part of the bylaw?
It is part of the bylaw, yes.
Questions from the audience on Article twenty-three?
Okay. Article twenty-four is called use table and parking. The intent of this article is to clarify provisions in the bylaw by making three changes. We are proposing to delete the content in the use table, Section 4.18, which dates back to when the Board of Appeals regulated parking with a special permit A2. In 2006, the bylaw was changed to switch the regulation of parking over to the Planning Board through a special permit A3, and this section, 4.18, was never updated or changed. Internally, Emily Wentworth and I have talked about it, and we feel like it was really just an oversight. A lot of times, there's so many cross-references in the bylaw.
Right.
That you miss something. So, we're proposing to modify that by deleting the text in Section 4.18 and adding in intentionally left blank, so that we don't then have a cascade of different incorrect references with all the numbers changing. And the second proposed change is to then add the language from that Section 4.18 into Section 5, so that we don't lose the intent of it. And the intent of this section was to allow parking areas for employees, customers, or guests of a use abutting or across the street from it, provided that service operations are not performed at the parking area. And we're proposing to amend Section 5A2, which is our parking section of the bylaw, and add a sentence that says, parking areas for each land use shall be located on the same parcel unless a special permit A3 is granted by the Planning Board to permit parking on a contiguous parcel or on a parcel across the street. So, although it's worded a little more eloquently than it was in Section 4.18, we're not removing the ability to have parking on a contiguous parking, a contiguous parcel or across the street. We're just taking it out of the use table and putting it in Section 5, which is our parking section.
Any questions from the, probably? Questions from the audience on Article twenty-four?
So, you don't think removing it from the use table creates any confusion? It's where, it should, it belongs with parking, and that's where you moved it to?
Correct, correct, because uses are not regulated through parking. The parking serves the uses. The next one is common driveways, and this is about as pure as a, of a cleanup article as you could have. And you may recall that we adopted text to allow a permitting mechanism for common driveways. And as frequently happens, you realize that there may be oversights or things that you could do to improve the article. The first proposed change to our common driveways bylaw is to amend Section 5I4A to delete eighteen-inch Cape Cod berm in the last sentence and insert twelve-inch Cape Cod berm. This comes from experience that the Planning Board has had. Typically, in subdivisions now, what we're hearing from our developers is that the machines come with a twelve-inch Cape Cod berm attachment, and so notwithstanding that our subdivision regulations require an eighteen-inch Cape Cod berm, the developers typically have to go out and make that last six inches by hand. Why do the machines not come standard with an eighteen-inch Cape Cod berm attachment anymore? Because the trend is to reduce pavement widths, and a twelve-inch Cape Cod berm is for all practical measures, just as good as an eighteen-inch Cape Cod berm. And so, we are actually looking at making a similar modification within our subdivision regulation design standards. That's a, a different process that gets done by the Planning Board. And so, because of industry trends, because of the interest to reduce impervious cover, we're recommending that change in this section. The second item within this is to modify the last sentence, and the last sentence of this section refers to the legal documents that go with a common driveway for maintenance and easement and ongoing responsibilities. Once this is created, and you sell and I sell, what does that, what's in place to protect the next owners? And we realized that we needed to amend this to delete the last sentence, which currently says, approved legal documents shall be recorded prior to the issuance of building permit for any building to be served by the common driveway. So, we're saying, before you can build your house, you have to record your easements. We would like to modify that to say, approved legal documents shall be recorded prior to A, issuance of a building permit for any building to be served by the common driveway, or B, construction of or improvements to the common driveway, whichever occurs first. The intent of this is that someone may choose to come in and build their common driveway. The house may not be built that year, it may be built the next season, but when that common driveway is constructed, we want to be sure that the easements and the maintenance and the, the access rights have been recorded, so that even if those houses are never built, the appropriate legal protections are in place.
Thank you. Comments? Audience comments? Okay. Sounds nice and easy.
That's good. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Um, Jen's gonna?
Yeah, so then I will jump ahead to Article twenty-seven, the zoning ban on marijuana establishments. And I think as we turn to talk about marijuana, I would like to, and should, give some background on why we are addressing marijuana this year at town meeting. So, I'll just back up and give a brief background. In November 2016, a ballot question, as we all remember, was approved by a majority of the voters in the Commonwealth, which legalized retail sale of marijuana in Massachusetts. In Hingham, a majority of the voters, fifty-seven percent, voted against the ballot question, making Hingham what's called a no community. Because recreational marijuana was approved statewide, if an entity wants to come in, wants to open a recreational marijuana establishment in Hingham, they would come in, they would contact the town, inquire what regulations we have in place, and that, they would find out how we govern where, how, and when they could open in Hingham. If we don't ban recreational marijuana uses in Hingham, or adopt regulations to guide the use, then the uses could go anywhere, other similar uses are permitted in town, and there would be no zoning limitations specific to recreational marijuana. The state has formed the Cannabis Control Commission to prepare regulations to govern marijuana establishments. The draft regulations were initially issued in December of 2017, and the final regulations for most of the topics, not all of the topics, became effective March 23rd, so just a couple of weeks ago, and the state began accepting applications for licenses April 1st, and they'll begin issuing licenses for marijuana establishments by June 1st of this year. In Hingham, we have, as you will remember, we adopted a moratorium. There is a zoning moratorium in place right now, but it expires June 30th of this year. So, it's important that we have either a ban or regulations for marijuana establishments in place before the expiration of the moratorium. So, that's where the Planning Board picked this up in the fall, and, you know, the truth is, it has been challenging work for the Planning Board to draft these regulations, because, you know, our goal is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the town, and the draft regulations provided by the state, they provided some indication of how the state might approach regulating marijuana, the marijuana industry, but they were, the regulations were also very unclear, they were internally inconsistent, and they were changing during the public comment period, which left us to grapple with how to best regulate a use that wasn't even yet clearly defined, even at the state level. In fact, the final regulations, Mary, I think you brought them with you, that just came out, that we had reviewed extensively during the zoning hearing process, you probably can't see it that well, but I can show you, we have a.
We had high definition, we can see it better.
Yeah, right. You can, you won't need high def to see how many changes from December to March, I mean, it's every page, it's every page. So, and that came out two weeks ago, right? So, that just shows you, and I tell you that to tell you the landscape in which we were trying to sort out what the best decision was for our town.
And by the way, that two weeks was after the warrant articles were all.
That's right. We had already submitted our, that's right, we had submitted our zoning articles for town meeting. So, I give you that all as a background to understand how we came to where we are. So, the, the article that we're talking about now is the ban, and I'll start by saying what it would do, the zoning ban, the amendment that would ban marijuana establishments in town. And the Planning Board unanimously supports this ban on recreational marijuana for the following reasons, and there are quite a few of them. First of all, as I already stated, fifty-seven percent of Hingham voters cast ballots against legalization in the statewide ballot in 2016, seeming to indicate a community preference for a town. in the statewide ballot in 2016, seeming to indicate a community preference for a townwide ban of this use. So that was sort of the first indicator and a factor certainly for us as we weighed the decision. Second, the role of zoning is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. And there are real concerns about the impacts of substance abuse and addiction and the impression that the town is encouraging the use of a substance that could exacerbate these risks. Now, that's not for us ultimately decide- to decide, but we got a lot of feedback, we held a lot of hearings, and the vast preponderance of people that came to our meetings and submitted written comments, they were in favor of the ban strongly, primarily for those reasons. You know, another reason that we support the ban is that this industry is evolving very rapidly. There will be delivery of marijuana once the Cannabis Control Commission rolls out the regulations that are due out in October. We don't know those regulations at all yet. There are edibles, drinks, candles, lotions, and the Commonwealth hasn't dealt with any of these products yet, and you can't- we just don't know. We just don't know how it's all going to roll out, we don't know how it's going to impact the individual towns that choose to allow it. And we don't- the landscape of how this will affect our neighbors and ourselves, it's just not yet clear. And I'll just state again that the changing regulations, I know I already talked about this, but this was a major concern for all of my board members. You know, I'm the only one here tonight, but I can tell you that all of us were very troubled with the constant changing of this. And, you know, we believe this to be final, but as I said, there are more regulations coming out in October, and so this was a real concern. And it just doesn't feel like an environment in which a town should be making this big decision and moving forward quickly, right? So that was sort of- I say that again, just to state how important of a factor this was to really the entire board. Let's see, what's the next reason? So what we came to, given this uncertain landscape, was that the prudent course would be to give our town the opportunity to understand how this all plays out. Let's see what the final October regulations look like. Let's understand how the industry operates in our state, and to observe and learn through the experiences of other towns what the effects, positive or negative, are that this use has in the towns that choose to adopt the sale of it. My board felt strongly that the town has very little to gain from moving quickly on this, and that moving more prudently is good government and makes sense for our town. The ban, if adopted, can be revisited in the future. You know, we talked a lot about that, that at this moment in time, this is the right decision. That's not to say that in five years, or 10 years, or two years, or 20 years, if this landscape becomes more clear, which it obviously will, and we as a town decide that this is right for us, then the ban can be repealed, and we can smartly decide how we want it to be in our town at that point in time. We held over 10 hours of hearings on this over several months. We got a lot of public comment, as I stated, overwhelmingly in support of the ban. The school committee, they voted in support of the ban and submitted that vote to us. The police chief spoke several times about the ban and expressed his strong support of the ban. And, you know, the final reason, as if all of these reasons aren't enough, which I think they are, I want to stress a few things, that number one, as I've already stated, we unanimously support the ban. The five members of the planning board were unanimous on this issue. Number two, and it's important to say that our unanimous support of the ban is not a condemnation of an individual's- an individual adult's use of marijuana. It's not a value judgment on whether or not our neighbors choose to use marijuana products. That's not what this is about. Instead, what the planning board's unanimous support of the ban represents is a concern for the character of our town ultimately. And Hingham prides itself on good government, and we have the schools and the community and the character that's the result of a long time of careful, steady guiding hands that serve the town and allow for slow, calculated, well-thought-out change. And that that would be- it would be inconsistent, we believe, with the character of our town to be among the first towns on the South Shore to allow marijuana establishments.
Thank you. Paula Karen, questions or comments?
I'm going to reserve until the completion of the presentation on this particular article. Series.
Okay. I mean, I know my colleagues did this as well. You know, I tune in on a fairly regular basis, the fact that we don't have HD notwithstanding. And, you know, the work that you put in to each and every one of these articles, but particularly the marijuana article, and actually the accessory dwelling unit article, but the number of moving parts, I think, that you had to grapple with and come forward with a package that works, as you suggest, Jennifer, in a domino sort of effect where you had to- you had to prepare the town for a series of what-ifs. And, you know, I think that, given the advice that we've gotten from the attorney general's offices, I understand it, we needed to have those belt and suspenders in place in the event a ban fails, then we'd need to move on to time, place, and manner regulations. One question I had had, and I'm not quite sure I've ever truly gotten it answered, and I'm not sure you can answer it either, might maybe a moderator question, is we passed- we moved a ban along also as part of a general bylaw, which as you know requires a majority vote at town meeting, where the amendment to the zoning article, the adoption of a new zoning article would require two-thirds of town meeting to adopt this particular ban, as I understand it. So, you know, one of my what-ifs has been, okay, well, what if a majority of town meeting votes to ban, but you don't get- you don't quite get two-thirds? And my understanding is we'd move forward- we would move forward to time, place, and manner just to protect ourselves. So we'd have a general bylaw that says no marijuana establishments, but we would have zoning regulations in the event that, again, I guess as all this sort of fits together, the attorney general comes to some conclusion about what's required of towns to say no. Right? Is that accurate?
It's a good question, and it actually speaks to the unclear legal landscape that's ahead of us. And each town is dealing with this in their own way, and we've been lucky to have Mary Savage Dunn following the issue, and of course Susan Murphy, Special Town Council for Real Estate and Land Use, and John Cofflin. And they have been staying abreast of what the latest opinions are, right? What do the mass municipal lawyers think, and what's coming out of the attorney general's office? And you're right, the conventional wisdom, the advice that we've been given is, number one, the best- if the town really wants a ban, the best- the best thing to do is to have a zoning ban and a general bylaw.
Right.
But and then in your hypothetical, because we've done all the hypotheticals, if the zoning bylaw doesn't- the zoning bylaw ban doesn't pass because we need the two-thirds vote, and the general bylaw ban does pass, we will, yes, move to time, place, and manner and hopefully pass. The time, place, and manner is the regulation that intensively regulates- it's a zoning bylaw amendment that intensively regulates where and when and when in town and how in town marijuana establishments could open. We have language in the time, place, and manner bylaw article that says it's allowed- there's one little provision that I'm sure Mary could pull out faster than me, but you'll get the drift. It's allowed unless there's another bylaw or ordinance in town that prohibits it. And that's where we're bootstrapping back sort of to the general bylaw and hoping, sort of fingers crossed, that that would ultimately prevail.
Sufficient.
And that that's the part that is still a little bit unclear, and it's a little messy, you know, to explain and understand, but that's the thinking behind it.
Okay. And in terms of the expiration of our moratorium, and again, maybe this is unfair to ask this question of you, let's assume the bans both pass at town meeting. Because there are changes to our bylaw, my understanding is the attorney general's office needs to certify those changes?
Yep.
Is that likely to happen by June 30th, or is it-
That's a good question.
I guess the question is, is the fact that town meeting has taken this action sort of sufficient to protect ourselves in the period where the attorney general's office is considering the validity of that?
It is, if I may.
Okay.
It is sufficient to protect us. The moratorium would expire. We do send the results of town meeting to the attorney general. When she opines and certifies our zoning articles and sends them back to us, they end up being, provided that she doesn't strike them, they are effective back to the day of the vote.
Okay.
So there would be an overlap. And we- so we would be protected.
Okay. And is there, and again, another unfair question, is there anything jumping out of you- jumping out at you from the regulations that you see, like almost immediately would require changes, or have you not?
Yeah, we've done a first pass. You know, we haven't been through it in its entirety, and there are a couple of items that were flagged as, oh, we would have done this differently, and so those might be cleanup issues at town meeting next year if that ends up the path that we are on.
Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this Warren article? Glenn, come on up to the microphone, please.
Good evening, Glenn Olson, Police Chief. I think the attitude, and this has been a confusing issue for police departments as well, because we realize that the law has passed and we understand that, and this is sort of a drastic change for me in 37 years of policing, that all of a sudden now this is legal. And we understand that. All the police chiefs, and we just recently addressed this at a meeting the other day, a couple days ago, is that we're still so unsure of where this law is going and what it's going to face as it moves forward to be introduced into different towns. And the more we talk about this and the more information we see, I think this is a subject that the public really needs to take the time to educate themselves. And not regarding the good or bad issues, but what this actually entails. This industry is so intense on media, pushing it forward, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but the amount of products that they're selling and variations of products, they keep on changing, and it's not just the THC, it's the CNBs, there's all sorts of advertising out there that I think is going to come into question. And all this time, they have never decided where some of the funds that are coming in. There's funds involved in this that are going to be distributed by the Cannabis Commission, none of which, or very little of, will ever end up in the hands of law enforcement to enforce some of these laws. Right now, we don't have the tools to enforce the driving issues that are going- we're going to be faced with. It's tough enough just with the drunk driving, but what's happening now, everything is impaired driving because it's multiple sources of intoxication or impairment. But the more I look at this, and we're talking about so many different industries that could spring up about this, and it's not just the growing- there's provisions where they talk about cottage industries. What is a cottage industry of a marijuana-growing dispensary? We were talking about some of the different bylaws, and, you know, I happened to mention the fact that I visited the Quincy Medical Marijuana Plant over in Quincy, and someone said, "How do you get there?" And my simple solution was, just drive into the old quarry, roll down your window, and follow the smell. So then we got to thinking, we had- everyone had to go on Google and look at regulations to control the odors coming from some of these growing dispensaries.
Interesting, yeah.
So there's, you know, and I'm not saying everyone tried to do their homework, but there's so much stuff changing so quickly in this that I think, and this is why I've said, it's not about the issues, good, bad, it's just that I've known Hingham for a long time, and I've never really understood this till the past five or six years, is that the town government moves slowly for a reason. And I think you basically nailed it there. You know, we do things slowly to get it right. There's no sense getting it wrong. It's always easier to go slow, educate yourselves, and do it right the first time. So that's, I think, when I sat many nights till 11 o'clock with these boards, and I really commend the boards, Mary's been my- every time I have a problem, it's Mary, what do I do? How do I- where are we going? What meeting am I supposed to be at? There's a lot of work behind the scenes here, and I think they've pretty much nailed the whole thing, in my opinion anyways. And I think, and it has, like you said, it's nothing to do with whether we believe marijuana's good or bad, it's just what we need- we're doing what we feel is best for the town. And there's always an ability to change anything you do. So that's my feeling, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. All right. What's next? Jen?
So next is what we refer to as the time, place, and manner regulation, but it's actually Number 28, which is the- no, sorry, the 29, Regulation of Marijuana Establishments. So, let me get the right folder out. Now you have to think of this, right? As we talked about the domino theory before, so now you have to sort of wear a different hat when you think about this article. And it's redundant, but I'm going to say it again, that the planning board unanimously supported the ban, not this article that I'm about to talk about and will be advocating for at town meeting if necessary. You know, this was difficult for us, this particular article. These were hard discussions. And while I don't want you to feel bad for us, this is what we were elected to do, but we were mindful in every hearing that we held, that some- when we started to talk about the where and the when and the how of how these marijuana establishments would be in our town if we have to have them, we know that some folks will be unhappy with our decision, no matter what we do. And it was- it's not something we want in the first place, right? So that made it even harder. And bear in mind also that we crafted this particular article knowing that if this article fails at town meeting, then we're left with maybe the very light regulation which comes next, but no real robust regulation of how and where these marijuana establishments could be in town. So therefore, my point in telling you that is to remind you that we had to make strong attempts to not be overly restrictive, right? Because if you're wearing the hat of, "We're at town meeting and the ban just failed," which means the town wants marijuana establishments in town. So if then we proposed a time, place, and manner regulation that was overly restrictive, that could go down, right? The town could say, "That's not what we meant, we just told you, we want this in town." So, again, I'm giving you background into our thinking process of how we ended up where we are. So given these confines, we came up with the best option that we could, and this article also had the unanimous support of all five planning board members. This bylaw creates a special permit process to govern the review and approval of all types of marijuana establishments. It's a discretionary special permit A2 from the Zoning Board of Appeals with site plan review performed by the planning board. In addition to the usual approval criteria for special permit A2s, we're requiring marijuana establishments to meet additional requirements designed to minimize the adverse visual, audible, vehicular, and economic impacts on a butters and the surrounding neighborhood, and as well as satisfy, as Chief Olson mentioned, strict odor controls. So there are many kinds of marijuana establishments under the state regulations. Most people immediately think of a retail shop, but there are actually also cultivators, wholesalers, distributors, and manufacturers that we considered. And, you know, the most- we have very good regulations in place in terms of how and how we would approve them and what the process is. The question that most people immediately want to get to is where. Where would they be? And so to start with the easier ones, we decided as a board to put all of the uses that were more industrial in nature, the- all of the non-retail uses, so the cultivators, wholesalers, manufacturers, distributors, we put them in the industrial district.
Industrial park.
Industrial park, thank you, Mary. As for the retail, I'd just like to walk you to our thinking so that you'll understand where we ended up. We decided as a board that we thought about the town, and we thought about, okay, if there's going to be a marijuana establishment in town, what's the right place in our town? And we sort of lumped together the square as a- we decided that- we talked about the square and the center as real- a place where you park and you walk, maybe you're with your family, you go from store to store. It's sort of a- it's a shopping experience that often includes multiple stops by foot. So you're sort of- it's a destination, shopping, the square. And then we thought about Derby and the shipyard, and we thought of those as sort of similar to one another and similar to the square in that way, in that you go and you park and you're walking around. And there's families there, high school kids, younger, middle school kids, they like to go to the shipyard and walk around, they go to Menchie's, they go to the movies. Similarly, at Derby, they'll go shopping and they hang out. So we sort of lumped those two together. The shipyard is also really a neighborhood at this point. By zoning, it was created to be a neighborhood. The square is certainly embedded densely into residential neighborhoods, and the Derby shop we thought was of the same ilk in terms of a shopping experience. So we sort of lumped those three together and said, "Well, gosh, ideally, we wouldn't have a marijuana establishment in any of those three places, three-ish places." So what were we left with? Well, then you're left with what we call in our zoning bylaw, the business B district. Well, then you're left with what we call in our zoning bylaw, the Business B District. And that, those are sort of two corridors, without getting into the map, I can sort of describe it to you. There's a corridor along Route 53 and a corridor along Route 3A that are typically places where, you know, for starters, you're on 3A, and you're on 53, you drive in, you do something, and you leave. So it's a different, we view those as a different sort of experience, and so that if we are to have these in town, we decided this was a more palatable place to allow, God bless you, a marijuana establishment. So that's how we ended up. Yeah, you're not generally spending time, kids generally, and there are some exceptions, and there are people that will strongly believe that it should not be allowed in Business B, and I can myself come up with examples of where families actually do hang out a little bit, or, you know, neighborhoods certainly can walk to all of those places, my own included. So it's not perfect, as I started with, but that was sort of, you know, we felt like from a planning perspective, that that was a way to approach it that we thought was well-reasoned and fair. And that's where, you know, so that's, I guess, all I really want to say for now about the Time, Place, and Manner, without spending a great deal of time getting into the weeds.
Comments?
All right, one weed, I'll, huh, so to speak, ask about. I didn't mean that, actually. Couldn't have done that if I tried.
But not the first time that pun's been used.
So one of the things that struck me when I read the regulations and the statute were, as you suggested, the number of marijuana establishments and sort of the range of cultivation to, you know, just retail establishments. Was there any discussion around bifurcating the Time, Place, and Manner around certain of those uses, or you lumped those all together?
We did, we did. We talked about it a lot. We talked about, at one point, we toyed with not allowing retail at all and allowing all of the more industrial uses, and we talked about, you know, would we regulate them differently? And at the end of the day, we came back to, we're at town meeting, and if the ban fails, we need this to pass. And so we felt like it was, and we started to call it parlor games, where we could get into all of these hypotheticals where, well, if the town votes down the ban, then we clearly need to include this, or if we take this out, this might fail. So in an attempt to not be overly restrictive and to have it pass, this is where we felt a little, you know, handcuffed in terms of not wanting to be overly prescriptive, prescriptive, rather, and restrictive. I don't know if you would.
Sort of taking that mindset that the ban's failed, the town has now said it wants it, what's the best way to regulate it?
Yeah, that was sort of, that's where we landed.
And I mean, and I guess the other reason for that approach, too, is just, again, the kind of the shifting landscape of what all this means and what all these things really are, and all that. But I just, because it's just so varied, you could, you know, you could almost get your arms around some of these uses as being sort of much less intrusive than, I guess I'd say, a retail establishment, for instance.
Right, and in an ideal world, right, you'd have the ban conversation at a very early date, and then you'd know the answer to that question.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Maybe you'd never get, but, and then if that failed, you'd have time, and you would have public hearings where you would get very specific about all these issues. I will say that despite all the public hearings and all the hours we spent on this, very few people commented in writing or in person about where or how. It was yes or no.
Interesting.
You know, so we didn't, we didn't have a lot of feedback, we didn't, you know, we felt like we were just doing, we just had to put our Planning Board hats on and make what we thought was the best decision.
And then, how about the Advisory Committee? Was there much discussion around the Time, Place, and Manner at that venue?
There was not a lot of discussion. They certainly asked questions, but not a lot of concern, certainly not, and they unanimously supported it as well.
Thank you.
You know, I think this is, it's complex. I mean, and some of it, you know, until you look at all these different, you know, these different aspects of it, I could just see town meeting getting really, really overwhelmed. And once you start then slicing and dicing different, you know, this can go here and this can go there, you worry that the meeting loses sight of the decision it's making. And I think that's also a really important balance, is that, you know, that the meeting needs to understand what it's being asked.
Right.
We have gotten, just so you know, and I think we forwarded them, but we, you know, we have gotten a few letters from residents who point out that Business B District is, to some, some parts of that, to some people, are too close to a school. Others are too close to neighborhoods, and I, you know, you can appreciate where everybody's coming from on this.
Anybody in the audience want to comment on this one?
So that brings us to the next, it's Article 30, which is, we call it definitions-related, oh, no, that's not the right one. Yeah, definitions related to marijuana, not medically prescribed, and Mary's actually going to cover this one for us. This is the lighter regulation. So again, put your hat on, the ban has now failed, now Time, Place, and Manner failed, so this is kind of our fail-safe.
Right, so this is Option 3. And if I may, just also clarify, the ban prohibits, the intensive regulation that the Chair just discussed, has the special permit A2 permitting requirements with all of the protections for any butters. This definitions, which is the regulation's light, does not have a permitting process within it. What this does have is language that would modestly restrict the location of marijuana establishments within town. Now, this language is also embedded in Time, Place, and Manner, so just what I'm saying here also does supplement the Time, Place, and Manner. And it adopts the same definitions for the uses, the marijuana establishments, accessories, cultivator, microbusiness, those are similarly in Time, Place, and Manner. But we're also proposing to amend the definition of farmer's market to exclude marijuana establishments or businesses dealing in marijuana accessories from farmer's market. And that's along the same rationale as the Chair was talking about with Time, Place, and Manner. Marijuana could be considered, you know, you have hemp products, you have lotions, you have soap, it could be agricultural. We're really not quite clear where, you know, different loopholes might be, and so the thought process was what would be an appropriate protective step to take for now, given all of the unknowns. And so the option was to have language to exclude it from farmer's market, and to similarly amend the definition of home occupation to exclude marijuana establishments or businesses dealing in marijuana accessories. There is one of the definitions, a marijuana microbusiness, and then there's craft cultivators. But so the definitions seem to keep changing, even from the initial draft regulations to the final regulations, there was more categories. So again, to be protective of our residential communities, and to then amend the definition of light industry to exclude marijuana establishments or businesses dealing in marijuana accessories from a light industrial development. So this would be regulation light, modest restrictions from light industrial, home occupations, farmer's market, and put in clarifying definitions of the uses as we know them today within the bylaw.
Well, so I guess maybe one point to make is, while this, while we can ban home occupation, we can't ban, as I understand it, we can't ban individual use and cultivation of marijuana for personal use, right?
Correct.
Which is allowed under the statute.
Correct.
Anyone, please?
I'd like to thank the Planning Board for the hard work it did in this regard. I think this is a difficult issue to legislate locally. I understand the rationale, and you've articulated very effectively, and I think that, you know, town meeting will have a menu of options, and it will speak, and we will be governed accordingly. So thank you very much for this. I fully appreciate the difficulty of this. You know, in the time that I was on the board, we never encountered this kind of a challenge legislatively, so it was quite interesting to watch you tackle it from both anti and pro. And I think you've done it effectively, so good work, good work.
Anybody else have a comment?
Do you have? Then we move, oh, to accessory dwelling units, right?
Do we talk about registered dispensaries?
Mary's going to talk about that one. It's a cleanup article.
Correct, so medical marijuana, very easy-peasy, it's a cleanup article. As we've discussed several times, the legislation related to medical marijuana has been changing rapidly. In fact, another pending regulation change is that once the Cannabis Control Commission puts out their next regulations in October, we understand that probably in December, they will take over regulation of medical marijuana, and they will be modifying the rules and parameters around that industry. We're not quite sure what that will mean and how it will play out, but there were enough changes to the language in our bylaw that we were incidentally aware of as inconsistent based on our other work, that we propose to update some of the references to statutes and legislations. That's cleanup.
Questions?
Okay. Okay, then we will move to accessory dwelling units, which is, all right.
FFF.
FFF, thank you.
It's now a number.
Yeah, it's in the middle, 26, thank you. I don't use the numbers, we had letters. So I'm going to speak a little longer about this one because it's just a little bit of a longer topic. The question of whether or not our town should allow accessory dwelling units has been around for quite a while. In fact, the concept of the town taking an active role in, quote, "expanding zoning" to allow accessory apartments dates at least as far back as the 2001 Master Plan, was reiterated last year in our 2017 Master Plan Housing Goals, and was prioritized by your board for this year. The concerns of our neighbors in town over time describing the need for accessory dwelling units have ranged from wanting our neighbors who are seniors to be able to age in place by sharing the burdens of homeownership, to wanting to accommodate a return to multi-generational living, and to wanting to have separate living space for adult children. The Planning Board took this issue up this year and held eight hearings totaling more than 10 and 1/2 hours of listening and discussing this issue. For town meeting this year, we have put forward an accessory dwelling unit zoning article that is very limited in scope. This bylaw would allow a homeowner to create an accessory dwelling unit, which is a second self-contained unit, within a single-family dwelling that is subordinate to the primary dwelling unit, and that unit could only be occupied by a family member. So the words start to get a little confusing, and a lot of folks in town, when they start to hear these words, they start to get a little nervous. Is this multifamily housing? Is this going to change the residential character of our town? You know, how would I be impacted if my next-door neighbor does this? Well, we on the Planning Board, you know, we thought about all of that, too, and we put in a long list of limitations. But before I start going into and explaining the nuts and bolts of the bylaw, instead, I'd like to help you picture what this ADU bylaw is and what it is not, because that's at least how I operate. If I can picture it first, before I get into the details, I find it easier. So let's start with what it's not. This zoning bylaw article is, what we're proposing is not a developer buying the house next door to you, and then renting out both units, maybe even run by a property management company. It's not that. What we're proposing is not your neighbor circumventing our existing zoning by putting on an addition to their house that they're not currently allowed to do, and then renting out this new unit to a new unrelated third-party person. This article is also not your neighbor having a new tenant living in the upstairs of their garage, or their barn, or their pool house. Instead, what we are proposing, and this is where you'll see how limited it really is, is making space in your home for your mother-in-law to live with you, but she has her own kitchen and her own bathroom, and there's a door between your space and her space. What we are proposing is your neighbor putting an addition on their home, which is within the limits of our existing zoning, an addition they could already put on today, to create a space maybe for their adult-disabled child, in a space that's separate and gives privacy and dignity to the parents and the child. What we are proposing is your neighbor being able to stay in her home where she raised her family, allowing her to create a small unit of her own, and allowing her son and his family to take over the main part of the house. That's the idea. That's what we're talking about. As for the limitations that we put in, there's a long list. We restrict accessory dwelling units to owner-occupied, that's important, you have to live there, the owner lives there, single-family dwellings. And this is the biggest one. We've limited the occupancy of both units, the primary unit and the accessory unit, to family members. We require that the architectural character of a single-family dwelling be maintained. What does that mean? It means specifically, we require that any stairways to a second floor be enclosed within exterior walls, and new entrances have to be located on the side or the back. If you're a neighbor and you're worried about this happening next to you, we have required that the Zoning Board of Appeals can require sound and site buffers to mitigate any effect to your property. They can require that your neighbor put fencing or landscape screening to protect you from any change. We restricted to allow only one accessory dwelling unit per single-family lot, and on lots no smaller than 5,000 square feet. We also have capped the total number of accessory dwelling units that we would allow in town. They're not, they're only eligible for special permits up to the number that would be 2.5% of the single-family housing stock, and that's a number we went back and forth over for a while. It's a pretty small number, and we still don't think that we'll hit it anytime soon. We also restricted the size that accessory dwelling units would be allowed to be, no more than 750 square feet, or 30% of the principal dwelling's gross floor area, whichever is smaller. We are also requiring that the applicant submit a notarized letter at the time of their application, also annually thereafter and upon the sale of their home, stating that the owner of the home occupies one of the units, and a family member occupies the other. And we're also prohibiting, we specifically prohibit, the creation of an accessory dwelling unit through an extension of a non-conforming dimension. So in other words, if your house, or your neighbor's house, has a non-conforming dimension, it's too close to the setback, you're not allowed to put an addition on that would extend that nonconformity. You are currently under zoning, in many cases allowed to do that, but we're saying for an accessory dwelling unit, you're not. And as I said before, of all these limitations that the Planning Board very thoughtfully put into this bylaw, by far the one that was the most important and swayed our discussions was the limitation which requires the unit to be occupied by family members, or the one other category of people is caregivers. And that was important because sometimes elderly people need caregivers, sometimes a family needs an au pair or a nanny to live with them, that's how their family functions. So, you know, it really was, it was seminal. Once we made that decision as a board, that the path we were going down was limiting it to family, that was a really big decision, and it shaped a lot of the discussions thereafter because we felt like a lot of the concerns that we had as a board, thinking about it more globally, were really mitigated by knowing it was just a family next door. You weren't introducing a property manager, or an absentee landlord, or, you know, new third-party people. It's really, it's family. And families are using their homes in ways that accommodate their needs, and their needs change over time, and that's just the reality of our town and our neighbors. There's a real need for these units. We've heard a lot about a need relating to affordability and sharing the burdens of homeownership. In 2014, we were lucky as a town to have a group of over 10 dedicated citizens study this issue at length. Over the course of 14 meetings, they tackled all facets of this issue and socialized it for our town. This group was led by our own Planning Board member, Gary Tondorf-Dick, and we're grateful for the work that they did. The Planning Board really stood on their shoulders and used their work product as our starting point. But their work was never recommended to the Planning Board to be advanced to town meeting, and we don't need to get into the reasons why, but ultimately, we ended up narrowing the scope of what that study group had come up with. They allowed... They allowed accessory dwelling units, for example, their final work product allowed accessory dwelling units in accessory structures such as garages, poolhouses, things like that. And we decided, and it also wasn't limited to family. And for us, that was important for now. So, you know, the Planning Board thinks that that was too much, too fast, for Hingham for right now. And so, we've put forward what we have to Town Meeting because we believe it's so limited. We put, and as the hearings progressed, we put in all those limitations I went through. It's interesting. If you watched our meetings, you would see that we actually, largely through the help of Gary Tondorf-Dick and his perspective on the study group, it really got more limited as we went along. It was, we were, in order to come to a strong majority, which we ultimately did, you know, we really all came together and just came up with what we think is right for the character of our town, right for now, right for what we're hearing, people want, and what the need is. So, ultimately, I believe that what we're putting forward this year for Town Meeting, it's carefully crafted, it's a limited step forward, and it allows our neighbors to make alterations to their homes that meet their changing family needs.
So, Jen, what, so let's say that, you know, in my house, we adopt the bylaw. We do something with an accessory dwelling. And then, what happens when we sell the house? So, we sell the house to someone that we're not related to.
That's right. So, as part of the annual, it's required upon the sale of your house that the new owner would need to come in, and if they intend to continue to use it as an accessory dwelling unit, according to our bylaw, it would need to be family. It would have all of the same limitations that we currently have, and they would need to sign, as the new owner, a new notarized letter stating that they are the owner, they're going to occupy one of the units, and family is going to occupy the other units.
And it sounds like, from the way you've restricted it, that if a new owner wanted to undo and create a single-family dwelling, it would conform with all our existing zoning. So, you wouldn't have a structure that you couldn't have built otherwise.
That's right.
As a matter of fact, it sounds like the Hatfield Amendment doesn't apply here. So, in some ways, this is, it's a little bit more restrictive.
Right.
Because that's as of right.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions?
Comment? I labored in vain for years to try to get this advanced, so I can't thank you enough for the leadership and the energy you've put into making this a reality. And thank you, too, Mary, for that. Susan Murphy, if you're out there, thanks. And a very generous recitation of the factual run-up to the effort that you undertook in this, too. I was part of that effort in '14. I have a very clear memory of what occurred. You know, I'm a father of a lot of kids, and some of them have, like, circled back to the nest with their own children. And, you know, it's a very satisfying experience, but it also made it clearer to me that the need for separateness is important. And I think you've recognized.
I hope they're not watching. You're not naming any names.
No, they're cool. Believe me, they were happy to leave. I mean, I just think that this is a reality that's occurring in this town anyway. And this is long overdue. I think what you put before the town for its consideration is thoughtful. Very thoughtful. So, I'd like to thank you, and Sarah, and Bill, and Gordon, for the leadership that you've shown on this issue. Thank you very, very much.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to echo those comments as well. When we were laying out our goals and objectives, as you noted, you know, one of the things that continues to be important to this board is affordability and accessibility of housing. And, you know, we had heard from folks that something like this, both for, you know, young adults as well as elderly, is an important option and contributes to the affordability of being able to live in this town, as you suggest, age in place in this town, raise your family in this town. And so, I, you know, the diligence with which you undertook the analysis and the sensitivity around, I think, just like your posture with respect to the marijuana bylaw, you know, I view this as really an important first step. So, I think it's going to be helpful to be successful here, to show folks that this isn't going to change the character of the town while allowing people, I think, the ability to meet the needs of their family. I guess I was wondering, again, I didn't, I don't think the Advisory Committee was on TV with respect to their deliberations, but I'm curious about how that went forward.
Yeah, we had good discussions with Advisory. I would say they had a lot of questions. We have really good liaisons from Advisory to Planning. I should have said that on the marijuana as well, it's true. And they do a really good job for us and with us, explaining to Advisory and advocating, and really laying it out. And ultimately, I'm trying to remember, this is twenty, they voted, there was one, it was thirteen to one, Advisory voted in support.
And just one other question, sort of this notion of family. So, blood, adoption, or marriage, that's how it's spelled out. And is that kind of commonplace in this ADU?
Yeah, so that's a good question. Whether it's commonplace in ADUs, I am not certain. What I know for sure is that Susan Murphy and John Cofflin labored over this because...
You have fair housing issues.
Yeah, and it can be a lightning rod in our changing definition of family, right? And so, I remember we discussed, Susan talked about an SJC case with the town of Walpole had been, what their definition was challenged. And so, ultimately, we think that this definition is right for our town, but we also think that it would withstand a legal challenge. And it was broad, in that it was broad enough. Some of the definitions that we would see get into, you know, third relation of, you know, and it would be very prescriptive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we didn't want to go that route. You know, I think that there are some family, I don't know that every family definition fits within here. I suspect that, I think, most do. But we were concerned with making sure it worked for our town, that it was reasonable, and that it would withstand legal challenge if that ever came up.
So, marriage, for instance, would include sort of step relations?
I think, yeah, that was the thinking, right?
Yeah, ultimately, enforcement will fall to the Building Commissioner. So, if there's an interpretation question, it would go to him. So, we didn't try to parse it out to the nth degree beyond following Town Council's recommendations, except that some of the other definitions that we saw would require math calculations to try to figure out the degree of relation. And one of the things that the board was very cognizant of is that any bylaw that they pass has to be reasonable to enforce without being onerous to the residents.
Right, right.
So, we felt that this was a reasonable, legally-supported definition, and we would leave the interpretation to the Building Commissioner, barring a challenge.
So, it's not like you're going to require 23andMe DNA testing?
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet. Okay. I think, I guess the other question is the 5,000-square-foot lot. Again, I'm trying to visualize that. Is that, is that a pretty typical, so can most people take advantage of this? Is it really bigger lots? Like, what are we talking about?
So, if I may, so the 5,000-square-foot lot is a nod to the Senate Bill 81 and House 2420. And in fact, there is zoning reform pending. And part of that language, actually, if it were to pass, would have these accessory dwelling units be by right. And that language says, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or require special permit for the use of land or structures for accessory dwelling unit located internally within a single-family dwelling or the rental thereof on a lot not less than 5,000 square feet, or a lot of sufficient area to meet the requirements of Title V." So, as we were thinking about lot size, we went through a few different parlor games, shall I say, of looking at maps with, okay, 5,000-square-foot lots, how many are those? Where are they? 10,000, how many are those? And ultimately, the board felt that if this zoning reform were to pass, it would be 5,000. So, let's look at 5,000. And then, let's talk about what other controls or restrictions that there may be. And one of the biggest restrictions we have is wastewater.
Yep.
So, we have the 5,000-square-foot lot. It cannot be in a lot smaller than that. However, that doesn't mean that every lot, just because it's 5,000 square feet, would qualify for this. You still have to prove that you either have adequate sewer or septic capacity. So, there's additional restrictions. Without going into granular detail, this offers an opportunity for most property, residential properties within town, to come in and perhaps construct one. But it's not a guarantee. Not everybody's going to meet all the standards.
So, for instance, with respect to wastewater and sewer hookup, would this then, would an accessory dwelling unit that adds a bedroom as part of the accessory dwelling unit need to go before the Board of Health?
So, we have a restriction in here saying that the application must be accompanied by written confirmation from either the Board of Health or the Sewer Department that there exists available capacity in the applicable sewer district, in either case, or for septic systems. So, it may require a formal action by the Board of Health or the Sewer Commission. It may not. But we need to have something in writing for the zoning board when they go to consider their special permit A1. The ultimate mechanism of those other boards, we didn't prescribe.
Okay. I mean, I guess, so I think this is a great first step. I think it was a lot of hard work. I am supportive of this. Part of where my questions are coming from is, and I appreciate the sort of methodical, this is a good first step. I also just want it to be available to people. You know, I just wanted to make sure there's some sufficiency of opportunity here that we're not just patting ourselves on the back. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we talked about that a lot. Are we being too restrictive? At some point, are we limiting things so much that actually no one can take advantage of it?
Right, right, right.
And then, fabulous, we came up with this bylaw that no one can use. And we do think that there are folks that can take advantage of this. But what we are also going to do is, to the extent that folks come in, inquiring and trying to avail themselves of this bylaw, and if it doesn't work out for them, we're going to capture that data.
Okay.
And going forward, we'll try to understand what worked, what didn't work. And the question, you know, you've said it a couple of times, the next, that this is a good first step, and then what, we've been asked, what's the next step? I mean, the clear answer from the Planning Board at this point in time is the next step is hopefully for this to pass at Town Meeting, to begin to implement it, to begin to see people who are excited to take advantage of it and improve their, you know, family dynamic living situation as a result of it. But then, simply to capture data, like I said, and sort of see how it plays out, and see how it's received. There is no intent from the Planning Board that this is the beginning of a five-step process where, you know, it's going to ultimately end up with something much bigger than this. That's not it. We didn't discuss anything like that at any point in time.
Yeah, and I appreciate that clarification. And I'm not suggesting that I have anything in particular in mind, but I guess I am recognizing that this is a pretty narrow approach. And part of it is, with the state legislation pending, you know, what might that do to our local zoning obligations as well? So, I appreciate that clarification, because I don't have anything else in mind either. But I do, I do see this as an important, narrow, and right-for-Hingham approach to accessory dwelling.
Yeah, that's where we landed, so that's good.
I appreciate the manner in which you've done this, and also thinking through some of the unintended consequences, because my recollection in 2014 was that there were a lot of potential unintended consequences that were surfaced. And I think the group at the time felt like, you know, it wasn't ready for prime time. Paul, I remember in the South Hingham Study Report, there was a statistic that, so I'm asking you for a number. No, but there was a statistic in the South Hingham Study Report that there was a certain percentage of Hingham residents whose income was lower than $40,000. And I'm thinking it was...
I think it's like 20%.
It was like 20%. That's what I was thinking. And that struck me. And, you know, when I think of, when I think of this bylaw, that's a lot of the population I think of. I think about people who, perhaps, the mortgage is paid off, they want to stay in Hingham. But if you look at a lot of the different options, and many people have said this, you know, whether the town calls them affordable or not, it's many people's experience that they're not. And so, this provides an option. I will be interested to see how the discussion goes at Town Meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this article? Okay. And I think that concludes it. I would just echo the, our thanks to all of the Planning Board. Mary, to you, to your team. We'll look forward to a really good conversation at Town Meeting.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having us.
We can't neglect Susan Murphy. She's been instrumental in helping us as well.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I know how I looked forward to doing this when I was on the Planning Board.
The next item is discussion and possible vote regarding intergovernmental license agreement between the Town of Hingham and Hingham Municipal Light Plant regarding the solar project at the landfill. Hi, Paul, are you coming up?
Sure.
Okay. See a few other interested parties here, welcome. Tom, do you want to tee this up?
Sure. So, while Paul settles in, at the 2016 Town Meeting, the Town Meeting authorized the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement with the HMLP for, generally, for use of the transfer station to place a solar facility on the land of the transfer station, on top of the transfer station. So, this is that effort. The HMLP has presented the board with a draft MOA. And Paul, can you take it from there?
So, thank you, everybody. So, Tom basically summarized it correctly. 2016 Town Meeting, we went to Town Meeting and asked for permission to build a solar array at the top of the kept landfill. In the run-up to that, we had, we met with the Advisory Committee a couple of times, with Board of Selectmen a couple of times, and that both Advisory and Board of Selectmen, it was suggested to us that we should have public meetings to explain what we envisioned. And we did that a couple of times here. You know, the butters were notified of the meetings. There were good turnouts. I believe we answered everybody's questions. We went to Town Meeting. There was very little comment on it, and Town Meeting unanimously passed the warrant article. So, that's kind of the backdrop.
And so, this document...
So, this document was prepared, there were several iterations of it and went back and forth between HMLP's attorney and the town's attorney, John Cofflin.
And just for, Paul, for purposes of people who are watching, can you just describe how this agreement fits within the process? That, you know, Town Meeting essentially authorized the potential placement of solar planters on the landfill. What role does this document play in bringing that to reality?
Sure. So, the language in the warrant article talks about, actually, the language that was voted on talks about the need for a license agreement to be reached between HMLP and, you know, the Board of Selectmen, and that this agreement would give us the ability, or the right, to build or have built the solar array.
And so, if this agreement is executed, then HMLP can take the next step.
That's correct.
And, you know, it's been two years since we talked about this at Town Meeting, so maybe if you could just kind of walk us through, what would the steps be? This agreement is executed, and it might also help to understand the dependencies.
Exactly.
Because I understand that without this agreement, there are certain things that HMLP can't go ahead and do. So, I think that'll help the audience, and frankly, it'll help us.
Okay, so I didn't know where you were trying to lead me.
Sorry.
So, thank you. So, you know, we have been talking to solar developers for some time now, and they have all expressed the requirement, you know, by them, for us to have this license agreement in place. in place before we can get them to begin the process to, you know, have site plans and go through all the steps that they need to do, so they can then present us with a purchase power agreement that hopefully, you know, satisfies our needs. So, it really comes to, because there is some language in some of the advisory comments, not always voted on, but the comments that talk about, you know, public meetings and all that sort of stuff. And so, it kind of becomes a chicken or egg, what comes first, a chicken or egg. Well, in our opinion, you know, this needs to come first, because, you know, we've had conversations with multiple developers, and none of them were willing to expend, you know, the time and energy and money to putting a potential RFP or a plan together until they know that we, the light plant, has the ability to control the landfill to build the solar array. And depending on what sorts of terms are part of the license will drive them to, drive their designs and ultimate pricing requirements. So...
So, they want, they really want to know this is a real opportunity for them. They don't want to invest the time if it's not.
And they want to be able to know, they want to go in with their eyes wide open, just what sorts of things might be part of it, so that they can adjust, because they don't want to be going back and forth between, you know...
So, this agreement, so again, hypothetically, this agreement is signed, then HMLP has the ability to go through an RFP process?
That's correct. So, we've had conversations with developers, and so, we get the license, and then there's a sub-license. So, you know, that's presuming that this, you know, stays largely intact, then, you know, we're pretty much ready to go to give this, you know, the sub-license, a sub-license to developers, and then we can kind of get this thing moving.
And you would go through an RFP process?
Yes. So, we would put it out to, you know...
Yep. So, then you would go through an RFP process, you would select a provider, you would have a sub-agreement with them, and then, is that the point where the permitting, the town permitting boards get involved?
The permitting process kicks in.
So, this would then be, it's got to go to the ZBA, it's got to go to the Planning Board?
I'm not the developer.
Site plan review.
You're right. Right, right. That's my understanding. I'm not an attorney, but that's the way it's been explained to me.
And there'd be a butter notification, right?
So, as part of site plan review...
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we could publicize the meeting of Planning Board for this.
And then...
Yeah, I think so.
And do we envision, and I don't know if this is a question we can answer right now, but what other permitting boards would be involved, or is it all with the Planning Board?
I believe it's site plan review and the Planning Board.
So, that's comprehensive with everybody?
And I have spoken with Mary Savage Dunham, that if this were to get to her, she would do a full butter notification process.
Okay. And so, then, it would go through all the permitting, and then, once that permit was received, there'd be installation. Paul, does this, in this process, does it ever come back to this board, or is this our only opportunity to shape this project?
My understanding is that this is your opportunity.
Yeah, and then we rely on our other boards, too? Okay. I might turn it over to my colleagues. That was just helpful in terms of framing up what's here, how it fits. Karen and Paul, what questions do you have about the agreement?
I don't have any questions about the agreement per se, just a comment about the process generally. You know, I think that, you know, we indicated when we were discussing this a number of years ago, that concerned residents on either side of the issue would have the opportunity to weigh in with their views. I think the site plan review process allows for that to occur. And I think that the Planning Board is well situated for that, as evidenced by the work they just did on this year's zoning articles. Site plan review has a whole series of criteria that the board would go through in assessing the project. And I think our fellow residents on the Planning Board are very well qualified to address whatever's proposed. It's tough for me to say what should be in this, because there's no plan, there's no proposal.
That's not hard.
Right. So, it's like, our voice, I think, is, we've already spoken, and, you know, we've provided clear notice that, you know, this isn't just going to be a rubber stamp. Light company's going to have to go in front of the Planning Board. And having been through site plan review on a lot of different projects, you know, it serves a very good purpose. So, that's my thought.
Well, yeah, and to your point, because I was thinking a lot about, you know, what you presented us here, but then I had to sort of back up and say, "Well, what's my job as a member of the Board of Selectmen? What's my job?" Mary's famous for saying, "What's my lane? I got to stay in my lane." And, you know, my job, I guess, I think a couple of things is, is you're asking us for a license to utilize town land. The only way this board has the opportunity to grant you the license to use town land is because town meeting told us that we have that authority. So, we're here because town meeting unanimously adopted the warrant article in 2016, saying, "Work with the light plant, give them a license, and let them then, you know, work with the developer and go through the town processes to make sure this works or doesn't work." So, I view us as, we're sort of the first stop on your hit parade here, where, you know, we would grant you the license to use the very top of the capped landfill site. But that is the sort of extent of our job. Having said that, and as you point out, the comment isn't the vote. The comment to, I guess it was Article 26 in 2016, did specify a couple of things that I just wanted to make sure we are adequately reflecting in the lease agreement. So, you know, one of them is that the board would be provided project updates both before and after installation. So, you know, to your point, while this is our job, and we get to shape the terms of the license, we, the town meeting at least thought we were going to be updated as to how things progress. There's a provision in here that you and I talked about earlier today that would require us to actually write to you and ask you to tell us. I'd prefer that, you know, I prefer that that be a requirement in the license. There were a couple of things that, again, the Advisory Committee thought were important to reflect. They include safety, security, and liability issues, and as well as the avoidance of interruption of the town's operation of the transfer station. The way the Advisory Committee expressed it in their comment, they talked about, you know, when the Board of Selectmen negotiates this lease, it should keep these issues in mind. I think to be true to the comment and to be true to the concerns voiced in the comment, again, I guess I'd like to see, I think some of that's there, but like, the avoidance of interruption to the transfer station, I think we could build that into a representation by you as, by you as the licensee, right? You would rep to that, and then you'd have to hold your sub-licency...
To that.
To that standard.
I found, I mean, I found visuals, I was trying to go through, and I found visual simulations, but I was sort of going along the same path as you. I'd sort of like to look at those aspects of the comment and go to specific parts of the agreement and go, "Did we, are we living up to that? Are we not? Do we need to..." We're going to take comments in a minute. We're going to have discussion around the table first, and then we'll open it up to the public.
So, you know, again, I think I probably have some technical, sort of legal wordsmithing type questions. I, like Mary, I'm very linear. I like to be able to pick this up and drop it in here and know where it is. And again, I'm also not trying to create a precedent where, you know, the Advisory Committee comment has to be, lay on top of this agreement. But I am trying to be true to the concerns that were raised in the Advisory Committee comment, and I think they make, frankly, good sense in terms of the town acting in this licensure capacity, in terms of being sure that the, you know, interests of the town are protected in granting the license.
So, a couple of things. So, I went through, and I read this, I spent a lot of time kind of going through it, and one of the things I wondered about, I know that John Coughlin has looked at this in terms of the town. I guess a question I would have for my colleagues, and Tom, for you, is, you know, to me, this is sort of a land use kind of an issue, and would it be in our best interest to ask Susan Murphy to take a look at it? I throw that out as the non-lawyer on the board. I'm not trying to create an extra step, but she's our land use attorney. I think for me, and I went back to the comment, because I was actually the member of the board that kind of shepherded a lot of this through. And I think that a lot of what the comment was institutionalizing was a lot of the discussion that we had, and a lot of commitments that, like, I believe I made to the citizens of Hingham. And I think, you know, for me, I feel like I've made a commitment to the citizens, and that they, in approving this warrant article two years ago, said, "We trust that you're going to follow through on what you said." And so, that's really, that's really a lot of how I'm looking at this. And I just want to read a couple of things from the comment, because I think it'll give a little bit of a sense of where I'm coming from here. It says, "For a project of this magnitude that involves the use of town lands, the Advisory Committee believes it's important for the town and the public to have continued input and involvement beyond that provided by the normal use permitting process." So, we sort of said, "Well, that's all required, but we want to do better than that." And the Advisory Committee goes on to suggest that the agreement between the town and HMLP provide for some things. Now, you know, is the agreement this document? Is it this document plus the site plan review? I sort of think it's the whole thing. But there were a couple of, Karen mentioned the technical aspects. There's one part of it that says, "There'd be opportunity for public review of the proposed agreement between the town and HMLP before it was finalized." And I think where some of my difficulty is right now, and where I think maybe some others' difficulty is based on the correspondence, is that this is kind of the first public discussion we've had since town meeting. And I think it, I think people are sort of, and I'm sort of saying, "Well, okay, have we had sufficient public discussion on this one piece of the longer process?" And, I mean, I'll say, I couldn't vote on this tonight. I'm happy to talk about, you know, do we want to schedule something for next week? Or, I understand there's a time sensitivity, but I'm trying to get my, I'm trying to sort of square in my own mind whether there's been sufficient opportunity for public review of this document, given its role in the bigger process. And I was also interested in kind of hearing where both of you were coming out, and your comments are helpful.
If you want to modify the agreement, I suppose, I think that the rationale set out in the comment can be referred to by the Planning Board, and any kind of site plan review it does, but it's all your comfort level.
I mean, I am cognizant of the time pressure on you, so I guess I'm wondering, you know, my comments are not of a nature that would, are seeking to derail the project, I guess. They're seeking more to clarify some of my own concerns, and some of the concerns articulated in the Advisory Committee comment. So, I guess I'm wondering from you, you know, do you think it would be possible to turn this, you know, I don't know, what's today, Tuesday, by the end of the week? I can certainly make myself available, I don't know if Susan can make herself available, to try to turn something that we could post publicly and vote on it next week? I mean, I hate to add a meeting to our schedule.
And I want to hear, too. I mean, I think there might be some people who came for this as well, and part of what I'm looking forward to tonight is a little bit of that. We've gotten a little bit of correspondence, and, you know, Paul, like my colleagues, you know, Paul and I were on the board when, you know, we shepherded this through. We thought it was a really good idea. So, you know, I haven't changed my mind on it. I just, I want to make sure that I followed through on the commitment that I made to residents of the town as to how this will go. And, you know, and I'm really trying to get there, because, you know, I gave my word is the way I look at it.
That's an important thing. So, I guess, so, does a week still work for you?
Yeah, a week would work for me. You know, and, you know, I can speak for HMLP's attorney, you know, she turns stuff around quickly. So, you know, and depending on Susan's availability, I mean, I don't know how much she has going on with town meeting coming up and all that, but I could speak for Deirdre and...
I mean, the thing for me, and maybe it is John Coughlin, but I'm looking at those four points in the comment.
Yeah.
And that's really, that's where I can contribute to the substance of this particular document. And I want to be sure that, as this has been constructed, and I know the lawyers have been looking at it, I want to make sure that it was looked through the lens of this comment. Is this a good time to open it up?
Sure.
Questions? Bill, could you come up, please?
If you don't mind, I can sit over here.
Although, the mic needs to go with you if you want your comments to make...
Can we move the microphone, Bill? That way, the viewing audience at home could hear.
I can do it, Bill. Have a seat, officer.
Is that cord long enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm glad you... I got it, Paul. Thank you, sir. Thank you. My name is Bill Salisbury. I'm a resident of Ridgewood Crossing. I also happen to be a trustee of the Ridgewood Crossing Trust, but I'm speaking tonight not as for the trust, but as a resident, but I am sure I speak for a number of residents, not only in Ridgewood, but in this part of town, who are affected significantly by activity at the top of the landfill. Two years ago, and I brought with me, just in case anybody would have interest, a copy of the comment of the Advisory Committee and the recommended vote, which was unanimously approved both by the Board of Selectmen and by the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee, this was dumped into the hopper for the 2016 town meeting, and a lot of us were concerned. We were concerned that there'd be meaningful input. The issue of whether or not this was a suitable site for the landfill remains unresolved. The issue of possible ways to have it at the top of the landfill, if that turns out to be the right place, and to provide some measure, possible measures of mitigation for the effects of it on people who are affected by it. Every morning when I come down to breakfast to look out my window, I see the top of the landfill, and that's true for a lot of people in this part of town. And so, we talked to, I believe, this board two years ago, and we talked extensively to the Planning Board two years ago. Excuse me, we talked to the Advisory Committee two years ago. And as a result of all of that, the Advisory Committee and you took an interest in finding a way to resolve these issues in a way that was fair and provided for open access to the process by the public, and particularly the concerned public. And so, there was a lot of work done on this article, and the, to me, the most striking thing was that I've been around town for a long time, involved in town affairs. I know one of the Selectmen has been there almost as long as I have, and two other Selectmen are former chairman of the Advisory Committee. And so, one of the things that I have never seen in all the years I've been around town, and I... and I don't, and I would ask the selectmen to recall if they can, the provision that was added to the vote of the town meeting, that while the town granted to the selectmen the ability to take action with respect to a transfer, a solar array at their landfill, there were, there was a very interesting provision that said, however, the right to represent the town and take these actions ceases two years from the date of town meeting. And unless all of the documents of all the parties have been signed and agreed to in full force and effect. And among the provisions, and that the advisory committee had wrote a very careful, very careful comment, and that that vote, including, and also contains in the body of the vote, a requirement that for the, for the selectmen to sign any document, they must find that it is in the best interests of the town. And I believe that what that means is that they need to have all of the facts surrounding the proposed transaction in order to make that judgment. So I would suggest to you that absent all the facts, which include the resolution of whether that's the right site, what kinds of, if it is the right site, what kind of ameliorations might be possible or probable, and that a variety of issues relating to the, the form of the transaction, which is incredibly complicated because it is, first of all, important to get the value of the tax credits to somebody who actually can use them and pay for them, because you've got to have taxes to pay, to use a tax credit. And in fact, towns and town entities don't pay taxes, they're exempt, they collect taxes. So there's a very complicated arrangement with, I think, a special, single purpose entity that provides the ability to get that where it's going. And I know I'm preaching to the choir with at least, with respect to one selectman, but it's a very complicated thing and no mention, and the other thing that has to happen is you have to softly creep your way past a variety of other tax rules. You have to not mention in any sense disposition of land or any interest in land, so you have this kind of funny license agreement. And you also have to sidle past statutes on disposition of land or interest in land. You have to sidle around other tax restraints. You have to sidle around procurement law, and you have to sidle your way around whatever the rules are governing municipal light plants. And that's not all easy to do. And so you have a very complicated, very complicated array of, of an entity that does all this. But the bottom line, I think, is that the extraordinary step that was added to the vote was that the vote, the right of the, of the selectman to act on behalf of the, on behalf of the town was limited and expired two years after the anniversary of the town meeting of 2016, which is three, maybe four weeks away. And so for two and a half years, it appears, I checked with, I was able to chat briefly with my friend, Mr. Hume, Monday, and he informed me that there's been no public process in the two and a half intervening years, that the view, my take of the view that he expressed on behalf of the board was that the way it was supposed to work is you were supposed to sign an agreement and then get out of the way, and the Light Board would take it from there, and that was the end of it. And I don't think that's at all what the intention was. There was an intention to have this open public process. There was the intention, I think, reflected in the advisory committee's very carefully written comment, that there would be this opportunity to resolve all these issues as part of the process before there was any signing of any agreements. And that two and a half years went by, nothing happened. I think the, the Light Board's position is that there is language in there that you, at some point, have to sign an agreement, but that you were supposed to be in charge to ensure that citizens had all of these things that ought to have been done, whoever was going to do it. And that the, in fact, the permitting process, the official permitting process was to be on an entirely separate track. And so I think none of that has happened. And now we, we probably came to this decision to give the, this power to the selectmen because there was some fear that the golden goose was going to go away and these tax credits wouldn't be available. That was two or three years ago. Nothing happened in the meantime. There's a lot of hard work that could be done. If it was necessary to postpone the RFP, maybe that's true, but I think in a complicated deal like this, it's very usual for there to be an agreement as to what the selectmen and the light plant were prepared to do. And that, and maybe there was multiple pricing, maybe there were options pricing, whatever, but none of this occurred. And so the clock has just run down. It's two weeks until the deadline, and there's a lot of, I, I looked at the, briefly at the agreement which I saw the other day. I wouldn't sign it if I were the town. There's a lot of gaps, there's a lot of problems. There's clearly an ability to sell the project. There's an ability to finance the project and to have the financing secured by a UCC, essentially a UCC mortgage. And I'm sure that by the time a third-party lender gets a hold of it, the obligations of the town are going to look more like a take-or-pay contract than they do what's in, what's in the agreement now. So I just think that what was promised wasn't delivered. And I, I'm of the view that the delegation to the town isn't sufficiently broad to accommodate what the light plant wants to do. And I also believe, and I also believe even more strongly, that not only did you, were you, the selectmen, intended to be in charge, and that if you take a position contrary to what you promised people, you may not have the power, but more importantly, if you were to take action inconsistent with the scheme that was supposed to take place, I think you would be breaking trust with the people of the town. And that, I think, is the worst thing you could do. And I don't think you, I don't think you intend to do that, and I don't think you should get backed in the corner to do it. If there is an interest in having a transfer, a solar array at the top of the dump, there is the ability to have a process that provides what it's supposed to provide, and at the end of the day, get permission from the town to do it. I'm sorry to be so long-winded, but here it is.
Is there anyone else? Brad, do you want to come up and?
Brad Moyer, 23 Colonial Road. Does everyone hear me? Is this on? Okay. So, though I'm chair of the Energy Action Committee, I'm here speaking in my personal capacity. A couple of points I just wanted to bring up. One, I think the historical recollection that members of the selectmen had presented meet with my recollection. During the time, two years ago, I worked hand and glove with HMLP, the Energy Action Committee. We were at every public meeting, every advisory committee meeting. We were helping, shepherding through the process, so quite intimately familiar with the purpose of the Warren article and what it accomplished. So I think the, from a process standpoint, the point of getting the town to endorse the project, to allow the selectmen to enter into a license agreement with the light plant to move forward with the project, was not meant to supplant site planning and planning board process. Neither was that vote in effort to have the selectmen usurp the planning board process or the site planning process. That town warrant article did not say that the selectmen now override that process, which is the suggestion of the previous commenter, what it would do in effect. Nope, we met with the abutters, we explained during the public meeting process that through the planning board and site planning, there would be plenty of opportunity to raise their concerns and to adjust to them and meet those concerns through that planning process. So I don't think it is solely up to the selectmen to decide that. As the comment made clear, your role in this is to ensure that what is in the best interests of the town, including all of its residents, is being met and shepherded through that process. And I think you can agree to that by what we had suggested earlier, and that's the site planning and planning board process would, would see to that. The tax issue, I think, is a bit of a non-issue because the town is not going to benefit from taxes in this arrangement. You're benefiting from rental payments. That's what this was all about and how it was presented to the town when they voted for this Warren article, which, remind you, and as you brought up, was a unanimous vote. It was seen as a very good deal for the town. You had a capped landfill that was of public, it was public land for public use, but providing no appreciable benefit other than having a capped landfill. So HMLP saw an opportunity where it could build a solar array and produce some renewable energy for the town, and the town could earn rental income from that, similar to what other towns have done, most notably Blain, Braintree, off of exit 17 on Route 3. So this was seen as a no-brainer. And I think the unanimous vote of the selectmen and the advisory committee and town meeting all testified to that effect and saw this as a good deal for the town. I think the two-year limitation made sense because to have this Warren article in effect, but to tie up the land indefinitely is not the intent of public use. You know, you, you've got to use it, or you're going to lose it. If we can't get a solar array up there, we shouldn't tie that up indefinitely in this, you know, phantom vote. We should instead have the possibility of moving on to perhaps find another use for it. So it's unfortunate that we are kind of up against the deadline, but we are still within it, and HMLP is charging forward. It wasn't for lack of trying. I can tell you, I've had many conversations with Paul over the past two years, saying, "How's it coming? How's it going?" And constant frustration expressed that we can't really move forward, we can't get developer interest because HMLP doesn't have the right to essentially say, "Come on over and we can move towards completion through the normal town planning process." Nope, we have this extra step that we'd have to go through. And developers didn't want to have to deal with that. So we're not trying to remove abutter concerns, just like where we were two years ago. They're going to have every right that any abutter would have through our normal planning and site planning process. We'll certainly, I can't speak for that, for HMLP, but I understand they'll have plenty of opportunity to do so. And I don't think the selectmen are abdicating any of their responsibilities or duties that they agreed to two years ago by shepherding this through the normal process and letting the town do its job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Turner Bledsoe. I live at 232 Levitt Street. As a citizen of Hingham, I'm very concerned about the inexorable progress of climate change and global warming. I'm very concerned that we not process this project to its death. I think it is important to the long-range safety of Hingham as a community by the water, that we do everything in our power to respond to what is thought by the science community as a climate emergency. So I would love to see this project go forward and many others come along like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Mike Kucherovich, 25 Rice Road, also a member of the Energy Committee, speaking in personal capacity. I just want to add to something Brad said regarding the abutter concerns. I think it would be very hypothetical to discuss them here without having a specific vendor proposal with a specific proposed configuration, specific features, et cetera, on the table. And I think that is the job for the planning board. And as, you know, and this is not to take anything away from the current body, but right now it would be a purely theoretical discussion. And as far as, I want to address the first commenter's statement about the best interests of town, you know, it is, again, no disrespect intended, one person's opinion. And the town meeting voted unanimously. I think that's, that sort of overrides the, you know, conveys the spirit that this is what the town wants in terms of having a solar field, solar array on that location.
Thank you.
And, you know, other features notwithstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
If I could just correct one, one thing that was said. We had no, nobody has an intention, I think, to subvert, change, or anything the normal processes of the planning board. And there is no intent to do that. And in fact, the, if you read the comment, and you will see that, that there was an intention to have that as an entirely separate process, running on an entirely separate track, and it's not implicated at all. So I just wanted to clarify that. And as to the issue of, as to the issue of, the issue of no public, I mean, no public comment, the advisory committee, the, HMP's position, as I, as I take it, is that all the public comment took place before the town meeting vote. In all accounts, is the town meeting vote, and the advisory committee's careful comment, which is for naught, and that what needs to happen is you need to sign that agreement, and they will take it from there. And I just don't think that's what was intended. It clearly wasn't intended. And as I, as I say, I think you can see that by the, by the take-back vote. And as far as, as I say, as far as the processes of the town permitting agencies, those are supposed to proceed as usual on an entirely separate track.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Roger? Paul, I was going to ask you, I mean, you've been hearing some of these comments, so I want to also give you an opportunity after this if, if you'd like to respond to anything. Hi, Roger.
Hi. I'm Roger Freeman, 269 High Street. I'm here actually speaking in three capacities. One is a resident of town, two is a solar developer, and three, as a member of the Light Board. And so I just wanted to offer you my thoughts, and I'm not sure if I can split them all up, but they're coming from three different perspectives. First, as a resident, I ran for the Light Board because I think that it's, we have this incredible resource at Hingham Light to really control our energy future. And part of, big part of that from my perspective was to try to move Hingham And part of, big part of that, from my perspective, was to try to move Hingham Light in a more renewable energy direction. I think we've been able to do that in a number of important ways. But this, this project at the landfill is really the most tangible way that we can do it for the town, and it's a real generation of renewable electricity here on land that we own, on land that's not otherwise going to really productive use, although it is, it's beautiful land. I walk my dogs up there. I live right across Brewer Woods from it. At the same time, when I look at a solar farm, I think that's beautiful, because I think that's, that really represents the clean energy, and it represents a displacement of the polluting fossil fuel that's polluting our planet and, you know, causing asthma and acid rain. When you look at the solar project, that's what it's doing, and I think that that spirit is part of what was reflected in the unanimous town vote, that I was happy to join the rest of the residents in making. I understand the importance of the committee, the committee, the advisory committee, and the selectmen and their unanimous support of the proposal had conditions attached to it, and I think the intention there was to make sure that the process that was followed for the development of the project was responsible and sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors and all the stakeholders involved. And I think that the town processes in place at the planning board, you know, the DEP is gonna weigh in on this because it's the landfill, they will go through a significant development process. The developer will have that responsibility, and I can tell you, as a developer, that's a significant responsibility and entails a significant investment. When you look at the engineering required, the permitting required, a developer would never undertake that risk without having the knowledge and the security that if they went through and got it permitted, that then they'd have the right to build the project. And this is sort of the chicken and egg issue that Paul was alluding to earlier. So, as a developer, I can tell you, there's a lot of work to be done from the first thing you do is get the option, you know, to get the land, then you get, you do the site engineering, the permitting, and it's at that part of the process where you develop the mitigation to try to address the abutter concerns. So that, you know, we did some minor visual simulations originally to look at, and it's my belief that with screened fencing, you, we should be able to, you know, obscure most of the view, so you, when you look across, you'll see green rather than an industrial facility. They sit fairly low to the ground if you've been to, or driven past Brain Tree. It's not anywhere near the visual impact of a wind farm or a wind tower, which I think at some point that was contemplated for the landfill, and that would be something that everyone would see. And so, to summarize, I think that the intention of the comment and the provisions, the conditions were put in, they're intended to be put into the agreement, I think was to make sure it's a responsible process. I think the agreement is, can be modified to reflect those concerns and ensure that we'll go through, the Paul and the Light Company will go through a responsible process working with the developers. You know, some of the comments about the tax credits and the financing, that it is incredibly complicated, and we're essentially offloading all that risk and complication to a developer, and we're not taking that on ourselves. We're not going to expect the town to take any liability, and I'm sure the agreement should provide that the town is indemnified. With any landowner, it's typical that the developer will indemnify the landowner, and Hingham Light, you know, will stand behind that to ensure that the town is not exposed to any undue risk in this process. As a Light Board member, I just say we fully support Paul and the work that he's done over the last years that he's been serving the town, and I think most of the town is supportive of the work that the light plant has done, not just in renewable energy, but in keeping the lights on. And when we send the crews down to Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, I'm very proud of the work that we've done, and I'd stand very firmly behind the work that Paul's doing and the great folks over there. So, with those comments in mind, I'd appreciate your consideration and support for this measure. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Paul, at this point, was there anything you wanted?
I wouldn't choose not to address every single point.
No, no, no. Wouldn't, no, I just...
But at the 60,000-foot level, you know, we, there is, you know, the planning board and then whatever, you know, the DEP, as Roger commented, I forgot about them, there will be opportunities for people, you know, outside of the light plant and the developer to weigh in on this and have their comments. The general public will as well. And, you know, I think, I think the agreement that, you know, John Cofflin and Deirdre put together with what I understand, maybe some additional comments, I think that can be turned around quickly, and I think we can make it happen.
Paul or Karen, what, any other? We've heard a lot, and I appreciate everybody's comments on this.
I guess one, one point I would really like to make clear, and that is that we've been advised by council, and I've certainly read the recommended motion, that in fact the board has the authority to enter into this license agreement. So, that's, that's, that's the authority the town meeting gave us, and we have that authority under this vote. I think, Mr. Salisbury, some of your remarks to me sort of called into question whether, whether we had that authority. Again, I think we've been advised by council, it's certainly the way I read the recommended motion, that we could choose to enter into this...
You can also choose not to.
That's exactly right. It's, it's a choice, right? It's a vote. You know, and to the comments earlier about the unanimous support of town meeting, I think that's one of the other things that, that comes into play when you sit on this board is, you know, sometimes you're given instructions and, or certainly a point in the right direction or a direction, and, you know, I feel like in evaluating what my role is, that's part of it, is, as Paul mentioned earlier with respect to the complicated marijuana articles, when town meeting speaks, you know, part of our job is to carry out those wishes, so.
I always enjoy listening to you, Bill, and oftentimes, we don't agree. Sometimes. But in this instance, you know, I looked at the comment that you provided, thank you for that. I thought it was pretty clearly described what was intended to go on here. I don't see a variation with what the Light Company is proposing tonight. The explanation that, you know, they can't get going until they have something in place more or less keeps us stalled, and to affect the kind of change on the top of the landfill, formerly the dump, I think we need to take that step. The conditions with, that you cite to, on page 44 of the comment, I mean, that the planning board is part of its role in site plan review, will look at the safety and the security, and implicitly the liability for injuries and damage that could occur with the operation of this particular project. So, I think we're, I think we're well along. I won't echo what's already been said in terms of the town meeting vote, but it's pretty clear. I think I've said enough.
So, I'll jump in here, and Tom, I'm gonna ask one thing for you to follow up on with council because the last word of the recommended motion, this authorization shall expire if the board, the light plant, and a third party do not enter into acceptable agreements within two years. I just think, we just need clarification from council because I think, I'm just questioning if, if, if you have to have an agreement with a developer by April 25th, I'm just trying to think about the steps that will happen in an RFP process, so I'd ask us to get that clarification. I would just say that the comments I heard, both from, from my colleagues and from everybody on this, are really helpful. I think we all do support this project. It's a, it's a good project. You know, Turner, I agree. We really don't wanna necessarily, like, process this to death. I think we, we also don't want this board to take on a role, as Mr. Moyer said, where we're not supplanting or usurping the planning board process. Certainly, you know, if you haven't figured it out by now, that is like, really not my wheelhouse. I understand it's hard to talk without specifics, but at the same time, as Mr. Salisbury's pointed out, I do think that some of that, you know, everybody's saying the unanimous town meeting vote, I think there was an aspect of that was, that was conditioned on the way we were gonna do this. And I think, again, and I'm not, I'm not, I think with, everybody's been working on this with great intentions, but I do think that the, this item on the agenda came as a bit of a surprise to people, and I think one thing we know in Hingham, as we've said, is we kinda like to go slowly, so I think, I think we're kinda trying to work through that. What's clear to me tonight, that, you know, I think two years ago, and I can't remember to be honest, whether we said that the planning process and the, and this agreement were on separate tracks. I don't, I don't remember if that was part of what we said, but what I'm hearing tonight is that this has actually gotta be sequential, that you can't undertake a planning board process until you have an agreement, that it's, it's right now, right now, as you said, that's kinda getting in the way. So, so to me, that's kind of a new development, and we have to think about, think about what to do. For me, I wanna make sure that the decisions we're making, that, you know, were consistent with what we said we'd do two years ago. And I, what I might suggest to my colleagues is that I do think that I would like us and council to take a look at those four aspects of the comment to see if it can get a little bit more hard-wired into this agreement. I mean, again, I'm not the guy to do mitigation, but I want this agreement to spell out that there will be mitigation. I wanted to spell that out because I think that's what we said, and I'm gonna leave it to the planning board to decide what that looks like. I wanna make sure that we've addressed safety, security, liability. I'd like something in this agreement that talks to periodic updates. Again, I just wanna hardwire all that because I think, as we said earlier, it's, it's kinda good government, and I don't think that that's a whole lot of whole-scale changes to this document, but I feel like that's moving us closer into the direction of what we talked about two years ago. I would be prepared, you know, we, we weren't planning on meeting next week. I'll hold a meet, we'll hold a meeting next week. I mean, we, we understand there's some time sensitivity here, and we would like to try to work to see if there's a way that we can address some of the very meaningful concerns we've heard tonight and in writing, and also balance that with some of the great feedback we've heard from people on the importance of carrying this forward. You know, we, I think we have, we have two options for next week. We could take it up on Tuesday, the 17th, which is kind of our normal meeting night, but we could also take it up on, assuming availability, we could take it up on Thursday, the 19th, which gives us two more days. April 25th is the Wednesday after town meeting. We can't convene a meeting the day after town meeting 'cause we might still be having town meeting. So, you know, and I hope what you see, Paul, is that, again, we're not, we're not trying to be an obstacle here, we're just, we're all trying to sort of carry out our individual responsibility here and, and, and do it in a way that, that is satisfactory for everybody. Are you, are you available on the 19th?
Let's see.
Putting him on the spot a little bit here.
It's all right.
I can't do it till a little later, anyway. I couldn't do it till 7:30, anyway.
So, and if we did it, I would suggest that this be like a, you know, potentially a single purpose. So, Paul, I'm thinking, so if we did this on the 19th, that just gives us a couple days, but what I, here's what I'd like to see, if possible, and I remember we, we met the attorney that, two years ago, and she was very capable.
Yes, she...
And what, what I'm thinking is that if, if we could by, you know, Friday at the latest, have a revised agreement, that we could put very quickly on the town website, we could get it out to people who have already reached out to us that we can give in response, but we can get it out to people, and then we take it up on Thursday, and...
Sure.
I appreciate where everybody is. I'm, I'm undecided at this point, so that would give, that would give us all time to see where we are, if that works.
Which for me, I just, like I said, I probably can't be here before 7:30.
Well, why don't we convene the meeting at 7:30 and...
On Thursday.
On the...
On Thursday, the...
On Thursday, the 19th.
Just gives us a couple more days.
Single item agenda?
Single item agenda, yeah. That's what I'm, that's kinda what I'm thinking with that. And, you know, I also know that, you know, I got some, we got, the board got some correspondence, and by the way, for everybody that gave correspondence, our office, we bring it all together, so if you wrote to any one of us, we all forwarded it, so everybody got all the correspondence. But I know there were some people who were interested, who were not in town this week or who were traveling.
Yep.
And it's important to me as well that, that they have an opportunity to engage.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, we'll, thanks, Paul.
So, kind of as a, just, so what's gonna happen next?
So, so, what I'm, I'm gonna ask, John, I'm gonna ask, John, Tom, if you can have John Cofflin look at that language, I'm going to suggest that if any of us have any specific feedback on this agreement, I think we need to get it, we need to get it to Paul, I would say within, within, like, tomorrow. I think it would be helpful to get Susan to maybe take...
I'd actually propose maybe sitting with Susan and Deirdre, and, you know, I have a lot of comments, not necessarily substantive, but I'm wondering whether it might help to do a call, Susan, me, and Deirdre, or something like that.
Yeah, I think I could move it along a lot quicker.
Okay.
Really quick. Well, and like, then, you know, somebody takes a shot at a draft, and it's gonna be turned again, it just doesn't...
And I think where, you know, if Karen, you've got, you know, you see those four points in the comments, so I think you know, you know kinda where, where I'm coming from on that. I think the goal would be that we would have a draft by the end of the week because that will give, again, I, I wanna kinda get something out to people for consideration, so...
Yep.
We'll work tomorrow on scheduling that. Sure.
And I would, I would check with council on that one point because that may, that may influence...
That's a special issue.
Yep. Okay. Thanks.
Should entertain discussion and have, be available for us, for people who want to, to review the agreement.
Yep. So, Bill, my thought here is that, that we get an updated agreement on Friday, and that it gets, it get distributed to the board, and certainly, you know, happy to send it to anyone who's interested in it, and then, you know, that'll give, that'll give anybody who's interested an opportunity to take a look at it, to the extent that you have, have comments beforehand, and then next Thursday, when we take it up, we will take a look at the document. Again, we'll have a chance for public input. I will say that I think that the board will have to decide because not, not, not taking a vote is saying no. So, we're gonna, we're gonna need to take a vote next week, and we should be prepared to take a vote next week. So, to the extent that, that interested parties wanna help inform our votes...
Can it get posted to the website as a draft?
So, I would suggest if we do this, we post it to the website as a, Friday as a draft, and try to get comments no later than, say, noon on Wednesday.
I'd say, I'd say Tuesday.
End of day Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, we gotta, you know, we, the basic, the basic agreement's out there, so, I, I mean, there's no...
Just need a deadline, though. Whatever it is, we need a deadline for the public comments, and then we'll incorporate them into the draft as appropriate and redistribute as a final version for you to consider on Thursday.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great.
And thanks again to everybody for the, the very thoughtful comments and for being here tonight to have the conversation with us.
You bet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Good, Bill.
Next item on the agenda is water company acquisition feasibility, next steps. Just two specific, two specific things. And one of the things that we wanted to make the public aware of information on this subject that is available on the town website, so I actually asked Tom if he would just kinda take some screenshots of the town website to just orient the public and anybody who's interested in information about what's available, so...
I thought this would work, but it's not.
Okay. So, if you, if you wanna navigate, 'cause I know you don't have a microphone there. So, you know, back in 2012, when this effort began, one of the first things that the water company acquisition study committee did was to gather a lot of information and put it up on the website, and over time, it has also been augmented, and we just thought that it would be helpful. I remember two years ago at town meeting, somebody made the comment that there were over 3,000 pages of information there. So, anyway, do you wanna...
I can use this?
Oh, great.
So, this is where that high definition...
This is where we need high def.
...
You all have been working here.
Yep.
Okay. So if you navigate to our homepage, you'll see, as if you're familiar with the homepage, there are several categories available. One of them is government, hover over government, and all of our boards and committees become available to you. From there, you would select the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee, and that will take you to this page. And from here, on the left panel, you'll see several options, documents, principles of operation, water company acquisition feasibility study, et cetera. If you click on documents from there, you're brought to a page that lists several categories of available documents. I think Mary suggested that there were some three thousand pages of documents available through the, all of these different links. You have a category for legal dispute documents, category for town meeting reports, town meetings, reports, and other documents.
Tom, do you want to just pause there for a second?
Sure.
I just want to point out a couple of things because I go to these, these documents. So what you're going to notice is that all of these documents are arranged in, from most recent, going all the way back. But I would note that within the last few weeks, we added, we added two documents to this page. We added the town meeting transcripts from, actually, the three town meetings where this was discussed. And that's just the transcript of all of the different speakers and everything that was there. It's oftentimes very helpful to read those things, but those, that I believe were the only new ones. I would also point out that about halfway down the page, there's a December fourth, two thousand thirteen. Last week at our meeting, there was a reference made to a Camp Dresser and McKee, or CDM, study. And actually, in December of two thousand thirteen, the town received a notification from CDM that clarifies that study. And that particular document describes the scope of the effort, and it also attests to the fact that the study was done without any of the financial information from Aquarian. So it's, I think it's, while there's been some talk about that CDM study, I think that clarification memo is an important document to look at in conjunction with that study.
And I think we had a question on that last week regarding when, when that could be posted. I just, to clarify, I didn't have the information on me at the meeting, but I believe those, those documents that were requested, including this letter, were posted in September of two thousand fifteen.
Thank you.
So moving forward, you have other categories, Aquarian Financial Engineering and Structural Documents, DPU filings, decisions, and orders.
And I would just mention that some of the financial information that, that has been the basis for analysis, some of that comes from DPU filing information, so that's why that's, that's germane to this subject.
Historical studies, documents, and commentaries. The first item on this list is the study that had been requested last week.
And that was put on in, in two thousand fifteen?
September of two thousand fifteen, yeah. And then the last category that was available was media, internet articles, and commentaries.
So essentially, for members of the public with all those documents, you, if you have, if you can see a good picture there, all of those are underlined, and those are essentially links. So you can essentially click on any of those documents. Those documents are there for viewing, they can be downloaded, they can be, they can be saved. So again, a lot of information that's available on the town website. The second thing, you know, you may remember last week that Tom put together a chart that sort of said what we know, what we, what we think we know, and what we don't know. And one of the items in that far right-hand column, what we don't know, was governance. And the reason that that is an item on the agenda tonight is that my recommendation to my colleagues is that we ask Tom, in his capacity as town administrator, to begin the process of identifying and assessing government, governance options and bringing those back to the board. I think until he starts to do that work, it's hard to know when that might happen. But I would also suggest that as, as part of that work, that we request that he, he talk to HMLP as part of that, as part of those conversations.
Okay.
So I don't think we need a formal vote on that, but I do think that, before giving him some direction, obviously important, that, that we're all in alignment on, on that.
Okay. And it would be kind of a range of governance options, right?
Yes.
From kind of regional water authority to resale of water, whatever's permissible under the statute.
So a lot of, a lot of governance options had been discussed over the years. I'll research those, I'll document them, put them in order, and organize them for your review. And then, and we'll present that and have a discussion about it.
Okay.
And any other options that make sense.
Might be helpful to me. I mean, one question we tend to ask is just, you know, I know that most all water delivery systems are municipally owned in the Commonwealth, and I'm, would be curious at, you know, I know we may be somewhat unique, I'd just be curious of the prevalence of one governance model over another.
Okay. Yep. I had asked for a similar document, I think. John Cofflin was talking about that some time ago, so.
Yeah, I think I remember that.
Yeah, just trying to understand what, who was, you know, what models existed, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Another, another potential source of information on that is that Ty and Bond, every, every couple of years, does a study on water companies, water, it's actually a water rate study, but it contains an inventory and it lists out all different things, and it, in many cases, it indicates if things are a regional authority.
No.
So that, I mean, that just, that just might, that might, that might provide some data, maybe not necessarily answer a lot of questions, but a potential source.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then I think next item on the agenda is appointments.
Do, sorry, do we have some sense of like, like a timeline-ish for this, or?
Near term. Definitely not before April twenty-third.
I might, I might.
I would say a couple of months, probably, to get all that researched and compiled and reported out.
I would also say, you know, I think one of the things that we saw with, like, the country club at the pool, with the, with the pool at the country club, is that, you know, as things were moving along, I think one of the nice things Jay McGrail did is, you know, he got the work a certain point where he had sort of enough, and then he'd come in and we'd talk about it, and then he'd go off and do a little bit more work. I just, I think that works, I think it's better for the board, I think it's more helpful for the public, so that would be my preference.
Yeah. As soon as I have something worthy of presentation to you, I will do so, and we'll try to do so sooner than later.
I don't, yeah, Judy? Sure. Please help us.
Very well.
Well, you know what? Sometimes people at home can't hear, so.
Judy Kelly, nineteen Hobbisley. I was wondering if the minutes of the acquisition committee's executive session, which have been secret until the decision was made by the court, can now be added to the list of?
Thank you, thank you for asking. We, the executive, all of the executive session minutes from both the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee and the Board of Selectmen have gone to our council, who is reviewing them against both the open meeting law and the public records law, to make a determination. I should also mention, the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee has internally approved, I believe, all of their minutes except the last time they met. And so they, council will have, will, council will make a determination as to whether those minutes can be released, and then they have to vote to release them.
Who has to vote? The committee?
The committee, that's correct. The committee that, that does that. With respect to the Board of Selectmen, we have, we have approved some of the executive session minutes. When, when we go into executive session, we often use that as an opportunity to approve minutes. When a matter is pending, we approve them, but we do not vote to release. Our process with all executive session minutes are, after they are approved, we ask council to give us a determination. Council bases that on open meeting law, public records law, to say what can be released. So that work, that work actually began the day after the town received notification that the litigation was concluded.
And then everybody approves it, then we can find it on the website.
Then they, then they become publicly posted, and they would, they would join the documents.
All right, thank you.
Our minutes, our minutes would be on the Board of Selectmen's website, on our page.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have no appointments. Selectmen Town Administrator Reports?
Sure. So I just wanted to let everyone in the public know that starting, I believe, on Monday, if not Monday itself, it'll be early next week, the town will be implementing a phone tree, so when you call the main number at Town Hall, seven eight one seven four one one four zero zero, you'll be directed to your ultimate destination via an automated system. There's several reasons for doing this, not the least of which is Sally Sinclair's sanity. So we need to.
I'll vote for that.
So we need to, to join two thousand eighteen and, and set up an automated system. And that'll happen, it's very organized, it will get you where you're going quickly, and hopefully be more, ultimately be more efficient for, for the, for the caller as well, so that they don't have to explain the issue multiple times to people that don't need to hear it. So, anyway, that'll be implemented early next week.
Okay, great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I forgot four votes. I always do that. So we have four votes at the very bottom. I'd like to make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Hingham Shipyard Marina's LLC for the Tenth Annual South Shore In-Water Boat Show.
Do we have to do this whole thing? It's to Sherri Ruzinski on behalf of Hingham Shipyard Marina's LLC for the Tenth Annual South Shore In-Water Boat Show to be held at the Hingham Shipyards Marina on Friday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, from three thirty PM to seven thirty PM, Saturday, April twenty-eighth, and Sunday, April twenty-nine, from ten AM to five PM.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. You want to do the, um, next one?
Sure. I move that we approve the Spring Children's Craft Market located on the Tunnel Cap on Saturday, May twentieth, two thousand eighteen, from eleven thirty AM to one PM.
All those in favor? Aye. I'll make a motion to proclaim April twentieth, two thousand eighteen, to be Earth Day in Hingham.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
All right, and I vote to proclaim April twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, to be Arbor Day in Hingham.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, Selectmen Reports, Karen?
Just one quick thing. I was in Bearcove Park on Sunday running the Martin Richards Road Raise for Peace. The Martin Richards Foundation partnered with SNAP, saw one of my colleagues at the finish line when I was still doubled over and could barely breathe, but it was a really, really wonderful, wonderful day. The message is positive, that there's signage about kindness and peace all along the, all along the route. Bearcove Park was beautiful, if not cold, and it was, again, just a wonderful community event, like many here in Hingham.
Paul?
I joined the town historian, and it was Alexander McMillan and William Ramsey at the Historical Commission last night. There's an initiative that's being discussed to further honor General Benjamin Lincoln in the form of a statue. So more to come, opening stages of discussion.
Great, very nice. I only have one thing. Today is National Library Workers' Day, and so if, if people are seeing this, the library has been closed, so you don't have an opportunity today to say thank you to the men and women who operate our library and make it just a really wonderful place. They are dedicated, professional, helpful. It's always amazing to me when you look at the town report and see how many people go through the library. I think it's, it's over three hundred fifty thousand people go in and out of the library every year. So we, we remember that, we remember our library staff in a special way today.
And, you know, one thing I hadn't been meaning to say when we have been given our shout-outs about, the, all the folks who come, come to the table and support us during storm relief, and that is the library. Linda Harper told us that the library stayed open one of the days when so many, so many around us were without power, and the folks that were working at the library worked an additional hour on a Sunday so that people could have an additional hour of internet, of warmth, of being able to charge their, charge their stuff. So we really do have an extraordinary library staff here in Hingham.
Here, here. So with that, we will be meeting next Thursday, April nineteenth, at seven thirty. That will be our final meeting before town meeting. We would remind everybody that town meeting is taking place on Monday, April twenty-third, at seven PM at Hingham High School, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. I take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye. Good night.
Good night, everybody.